The meeting will begin in thirty seconds. The workshop will begin in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning. Welcome to the workshop this morning. And we will start with roll call, please Pam.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. Henderson.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
Mr. Ziegler.
Present. And now Mrs. Irwin for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody turn your microphone on.
Done. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And bear with me for just a minute.
Take those four minutes off our bill now. Not quite an hour. Not that I'm dragging or anything, Mike.
Okay, this workshop has been called to allow the Board a forum to further evaluate the district's current nondiscrimination policies. I appreciate everyone who has taken the time to be here this morning and would just like to make sure that you're aware of that there are not an opportunity for public comments during this workshop. Just to reiterate that the sunshine requires all assemblies of an elected body to be done in the sunshine. And that includes any conversation that we have where we might be collectively making decisions or giving direction to staff. It is typical that at workshops, we do not have public comment. While we record our meetings and we record them on video, our workshops are not streamed live like our regular meetings, but they can be watched after the fact online once they're posted. That being said, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, and I'll make my comments very brief before turning the presentation over to Dr. Thede. I just want to start by saying that we are Brevard County Public Schools and our surrounding community. We are absolutely taking on a matter that is receiving a lot of national attention, okay, at every facet of our community. And so here we are as well. And I believe we all here read the same newspapers and watch the same news programs that I do, so we understand the challenges and the struggles. We also understand that no one's going to save us. We have to do this for us, by us, right? And it's up to us. The, I think it's great news that we are all we have, because I really do believe we are all that we need, this community. All kids matter. I haven't met, I've met many, many people on both sides of the issue. I've yet to meet an individual that disagrees with the fact that all kids matter. And I've yet to meet an individual that disagrees with the fact that civil discourse and conversation ought to prevail as we do this. So here we are, definitely looking forward to the conversation. I also want to thank the senior staff and Board leadership. What we're about to experience was been, has been a true collaborative effort between senior leaders and Board leaders. And I think we're off to a great start to get it right for our community, for our children. So with that in mind, I'd love to turn it over to Dr. Beth Thede.
Good morning and thank you. Welcome to our Board Workshop on Nondiscrimination Policies. I'm going to give a brief overview of the proposed organization of the workshop and then we'll get started, but first I'd like to introduce who I have with me today. To my right, I have Mark Langdorff. He is the Director of Risk Management. Next to him is Melissa Katakis. She is a Director of Student Services, specifically students at risk. Janine Knight is next to Melissa, and she is a Resource Teacher in Student Services. Dr. Donna Boberski is next to Janine, and Donna is our ESE Program Support Director. And the final participant is Mr. Mike Bowling. He's an Attorney at Law with Bell &amp; Roper. As far as the organization of the workshop is concerned, there are two areas of discussion this morning, the employee policies and the student policies. Mr. Langdorff will present policy discussion based on current policy and then proposed policies and the rationale for the proposals. Following Mr. Langdorff, Mrs. Katakis will discuss our anti-bullying policies and procedures and share with you how they are designed to protect all students in our schools. She'll also provide some information for you about state reporting requirements and state data elements. Mrs. Knight and I will then present student and staff voice related to nondiscrimination. And as you'll see, the student and staff voice really aligned itself around a couple of common themes for both. Dr. Boberski and Mrs. Katakis will then present processes moving forward in ways that we can strengthen our support for our schools and for all of our students. And finally, Mr. Bowling will have a significant amount of time to present you with the legal side of the policies and give you an opportunity for ample discussion among yourselves and with us as needed. There are some logical breaks built in after each section for questions, if you have any. And like I said, in addition, Mr. Bowling's section is designed for you to be able to ask questions and talk with him as you need. I've also set aside time at the end of the Board for the Board to have discussion related to direction moving forward. If this meets your expectations, then we'll get ready to get started and I'll introduce Mr. Langdorff.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I'm not sure if you can hear me or not. Okay. We'll switch it out, how's that? First off, I did provide you with a copy of a three-ring binder. I'm not going to read everything in this binder, by the way. I just wanted to give you that right up front. But there are certain parts of it that I have highlighted in each one of the tabs, and I thought I'd kind of outline what those are. The first thing that I've listed in your binder, there were some questions that you had and asked Mr. Bowling to respond to. This is not going to be part of my presentation, but you will find that in the sleeve of your book. Is that better? Can you hear me a little bit better there? Okay, how about I do it this way? Obviously, you'll see that in the sleeve. I provided a table of contents to give you an idea of what is in each one of those tabs. And I thought I would start off with Tab 1. I've asked Rosemary Browning to present those so the audience can see exactly what you're going to be looking at during this, during my presentation. First and foremost, a lot of people have asked, how did, how did risk get involved in the nondiscrimination policies that are listed on here? It's one of those things that I was assigned to do a long time ago. I'm very happy to do it. My responsibilities with that are to make sure on an annual basis, our nondiscrimination policy meets the DOE regulation. After the first tab, you'll see the last time we were contacted by the Florida Department of Education was last February, February 15, 2015, by the way. And I was contacted by Mr. Dennis LaFilles of the DOE, and he indicated that we needed to update our nondiscrimination policy that's listed on our webpage as well as in our publications. What he had me, he also sent to me is on the second page, on Page 2 there, Rosemary, the, what the DOE's guidelines are towards the nondiscrimination policy. If you'll see there, it says the Annual Notification of Nondiscrimination. What that requires by 45 CFR Part 80 Appendix B indicates that prior to the beginning of each school year, recipients of federal funds must advise students, parents, employees, and the general public that all vocational opportunities will be offered without regard to race, color, national origin, sex, disability. And this must be announced either, this Notice of Nondiscrimination must be announced either in local newspapers, district publications, or other media so it reaches the public. That's one of the reasons why our nondiscrimination policy is so detailed and asks for race, religion, national origin, and the like. The year before, I was contacted by Mr. LaFilles the same way, and you will notice that in our nondiscrim, you'll see the Boy Scout Act. That was a requirement two years ago. So on an annual basis, they are looking at our nondiscrimination notices and asking us to update. At present, they have not contacted me regarding what we're here to talk about today with regards to sexual orientation and gender identity, as the state has not come out indicating that that must be listed in our policies. I've checked federal guidelines as well. We are not required by federal law to place that in our policies. And there is no DOE regulation that would indicate it as well. The reason why I think that, that is something to indicate is you are not required to do it. What I'm going to present to you is indication from many organizations and people that would recommend that we do add that to our policy. And that's what I'm going to talk to you about through the subsequent pages. Obviously, it's not required. Mr. Bowling is here and he can talk about whether we should add it and whether it creates a liability exposure for us at the end. But I'm just going to talk about that issue and who is recommending it in the subsequent pages. If you look in Tab 2, you'll see where our nondiscrimination notice is actually posted on our webpage. If you look towards the bottom, it's very small letters, and Rosemary is pulling that up. I know that it's hard to read. It's hard for me to read, and I've got my readers on. So I actually just blew that part up so you can see on the next page that it's listed in detail as far as race, religion. What we are also required to list is who our equity contacts would be. So if anyone has a complaint of race, religion, sex, national origin, discrimination, or has questions on it, these are the three people within the district that they would contact to get their questions answered, file complaints, et cetera. That is required as far as that initial notification as well. As you'll see, this is on our webpage. On the following page, you'll see the inside of our telephone booklet that also has that same information. So you'll see the Boy Scout Act. You'll see all of those things that are listed in our nondiscrimination notice. As I say, this is what the DOE is looking to make sure we have in our policies and in our notices every year. So I'm contacted by them if there's something missing, and I work to update that. So that's why you'll, that's, I think there was a question about that at one time. Why do we have so much detail? And that is exactly why, because the DOE requires it. If you'll go to Tab 3, I also wanted to include something when it comes to the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. Back in October, when Dr. Blackburn was asked to bring the language adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the Board through a proposed policy, where I got that information from and why I put it under sex is if you look at the webpage, and you'll see on the bottom of that page where the web address is. So if you wanted to look at that later tonight or at another time, you could go to that website and find this very page. If you were to click on each one of those where you'll see age, disability, equal pay, compensation, that lists the EEOCs requirements for those particular areas. What's interesting, from the time I looked at it in November until now, they added equal pay and compensation. So that's something that's new, that needs to be added. I'm not sure if we need to do that here. I'll be communicating with the DOE to find out if we need to add that to our policies as well. But obviously, you'll see something in here, I think the 6 from the top, Pregnancy, which our policy should have, but we do not have it in at the present time. In the policies that I provided to you back in January, I did add Pregnancy. So currently, our policy does not include that, but it should be added according to what the EEOC would recommend to us. But if you wanted to look at each one of those definitions and how I listed it, this is the webpage you could go to and read exactly what the EEOC does as far as protecting the public with regards to discrimination issues. Behind that, which I thought might be of interest to you, because this is brand-new that appears on the EEOC's website as well, is a, on Page 2 of that, it's a new information sheet that the EEOC put out. I did not notice this back in October when I looked at it. I just noticed this within the past month. And it, what it is, what it is, is what you should know about EEOC and the enforcement and protections for LGBT workers. What the EEOC will do if we were to ever get a complaint from somebody who is in that community, they will focus their investigations and look to find out if we have violated those areas that are listed in yellow. So for example, if somebody were to make a complaint that we failed to hire an applicant because she is a transgendered woman, they would focus that as their investigation because they find that to be discrimination under the EEOC's definition. And you can see the rest of those down there. Denying an employee equal access to a common bathroom is one of those questions that they would find a discriminatory act. The EEOC would also do that. And, or subjecting someone to negative terms with regards to their, their position. I think what I've been trying to do with Beth and everyone at this table on an annual basis is when we meet and train investors, our administrators with regards to that. I want them, I want your administrators to focus on the negative words that are used to describe people who fall into the same, or sexual orientation and transgendered status. Basically, what I tell them is if you hear the word that starts with an F and is used to derogatorily describe someone who's male and homosexual, that that's the type of thing that should be eliminated. I kind of look at it, and I've described to everyone, in my mind, when you have that word, it kind of amounts to the same as using the N-word when you're describing somebody of African-American descent. I'd like to see it eliminated. It's not used as a term of endearment by staff, or not by staff, but by students, because staff do not use that. But students will use that word as a derogatory term towards others. And I think if we could work to eliminate that word from our vocabulary, that would go a long way in helping these students and all students be rid, be rid of this horrible thing when it comes to that sort of teasing and harassment. Obviously, in an employment position, if an employee was subject to that word, the EEOC would call that discrimination or harassment under the EEO's definition. If you look at Tab 4, Tab 4 is our current policy as the way it states in, on your website, because you can find this obviously at the webpage listed below that policy. I've highlighted the area where we would talk about national origin, religion, and all of those things. So that's the way it currently lists. Tab 5 is the policy that I provided to you back in January when it went to consent. I want to talk about a couple of things here because I think this was left out of the conversation in January, and it may be something for you to consider. I had originally, and this is my fault originally when I presented this for information, I had taken the word unlawful discrimination out of that policy. Prior to presenting the final policy to you back in January, Mike Bowling, Harold Beislein, and I met for about three hours to go over this policy. We spent a lot of time discussing what should be added, what should, what should be taken out, and the like. Both Harold and Mike indicated that what we needed to add unlawful discrimination because that's where the legal exposure is. There are forms of legal discrimination, and there are unlawful forms of discrimination. Our job would be to focus on ridding the District of unlawful discrimination and keeping the lawful discrimination available. Some might ask, what is lawful discrimination? Probably the easiest way to describe it is we have certain tests that are required for kids of a certain age. We keep kids who are older and younger from doing that, so we are discriminating against those others based on age. You might find that with regards to boys' sports and girls' sports as well. There are lawful discrimination issues because we allow the boys to practice and participate in boys' girl's sports legally, and we do the same for the girls as well. So those are forms of legal discrimination that we can gain, that we deal with, and, but we want to rid ourselves of the unlawful discrimination, and we ask everyone to come forward if they've been discriminated against so we can investigate and find out if it is that, legal or unlawful. That's the standard. That's why I added it back in. What I also did, because I think this is important to note, where it comes to sex, under the EEOC's recommendation and the Office of Civil Rights, they would list sexual orientation and transgendered as part of sex discrimination. They do not list it as a separate thing. So if you'll see where I put in sex, and in parentheses, I've put in including sexual harassment, sexual orientation, and gender identity. That is why I listed it that way, because the EEOC as well as the OCR also have that. I also highlighted Pregnancy because that is listed in the EEOC's recommendation. I would like to add that. Regardless of what you decide with regards to adding this, those sexual orientation or gender identity, I would like to bring this back and, and include Pregnancy because I think it's something that we should add at this point so that we're in compliance with what the EEOC would say. That's enough that I'll talk about that policy. If you look in Tab 6, here's something that many may not be aware of, but I certainly was because I was involved in this back in 2004. I've listed Board Policy 5730, which is the equal access for non-district sponsored student clubs and activities. I'm not a spring chicken. I've been with the Board for a long time. And I've been in this role for quite some time. So back in 2004, there was some issues with regards to student clubs, especially students who wanted to have a Gay-Straight Alliance Club. In 2003, a lot of your high school principals would not allow the clubs to be called what the students wanted them to be called. They were allowing diversity clubs or something along those lines, but they, they didn't want a club called a Gay-Straight Alliance. We had a student who was a gay young man, and he wanted to start a Gay-Straight Alliance Club, and his principal denied him the right to do that because he didn't want that name. That student hired an attorney who is represented by the American Civil Liberties Union, and they brought forward a claim saying, "You do not have the right to withhold the name of a student club because you offer non-district, or you offer other non-district sponsored clubs." What they were referring to is the Equal Access Act, which clearly goes over what you have to do with regards to clubs. And sure enough, in that particular Equal Access Act, we had to make a change. The easiest way we did that was by creating two policies. One for district-sponsored clubs, which is 2430, and I also created 5730 for equal access to non-district sponsored clubs. And gave those students a way for them to meet, even though some might feel it's controversial, and back in 2003, it was more of a controversial issue. Part of that, and listed in your policy now, is a, is a way for those students to have that club, because I added the words, "Participation in a student-initiated meeting must be available to all students who wish to attend and cannot be denied on the basis of a student's race, color, creed, religion, gender, gender orientation, national origin, disability, or social or economic status." That's been in your policy since 2004, if you were not aware of it. So we do have protections in policy, especially for students who wish to have a Gay-Straight Alliance Club, that says we will not discriminate based on their sexual orientation. So that is in your current policies. If you look at Tab 7, and I think this might be something of interest to you. I contacted Mr. Dick Clapp, who's the owner and purveyor of Niola for Schools, which is our vendor for Board policies. Dick had submitted, suggested policies with regards to nondiscrimination a few times. I've attached all those behind there, so I'll talk about those in a moment. But in all of his policy recommendations, he does include the parenthetical reference to sexual orientation, transgender status, and gender identity. I asked Dick if he would write a letter or send me something that would indicate why his policy is that way. As you know, Niola is a vendor that has a lot of school districts as their clients. Some of these examples you'll see in the back are his clients, some are not. But he has an awful lot of clients in Florida. I would say the majority of school districts receive their policies through, from Niola for Schools. He also has districts throughout the country, as his, his location is, is in Ohio. He's a former superintendent of, of a public school system there, and he's well-versed in these things, and he has a staff of attorneys that validate these policies, and they have recommended it. Actually, I'd like to read what he said, because I think this is important for you to understand what Dick's position is on it. He said, "The parenthetical reference to sexual orientation, transgendered status, and gender identity in our policies included, is included so that it is clear that those charged with implementing the Board's policies and the protections therein apply to all students. We believe that guidance issued since 2010, as well as compliance action taken by the OCR and EEOC, served to underscore the point made in the 2010 letter. We, of course, encourage all of our clients to include the parenthetical reference in their policies and to vigorously enforce the protections for all students. We believe that discrimination or harassment regardless of the motivating reason is wrong and is stated as such in the 2010 Dear Colleague Letter." Obviously, Dick knows that it's not required by federal law or any state law to include that, but he is included in, in all of his, his policy recommendations for districts to consider. The one thing that everyone needs to understand, and I, and the audience does too, Mr. Clapp will send us on an annual basis a list of policies that his company fills should be updated. It's up to us to either accept those updates and, and put those into place or make changes to our existing policies along with theirs to bring those policies up to date. We don't have to accept their recommendations, like you don't have to as well in this particular situation, but it's certainly his recommendation to do. There are several policies, and one that I'm well aware of, and I think most of you are, Facility Use Agreement Policy, 7510, because I'm in there all the time, doesn't reflect their policy at all. It's something that we put together for the School Board of Broad County, so we have not accepted that. Whereas, a lot of our policies, we have reflected exactly what Mr. Clapp's company has recommended, just to give you an idea. If you look at Tab 9, I want to show you the examples that Mr. Clapp has recommended. He's got a list of all of the policies that he's recommended this change to. So for example, in Board Policy 1362, I've highlighted that area where he puts sex, including sexual orientation, transgendered status, and gender identity. I also underlined Pregnancy, because I do want to make sure we consider that for the future. If you'll go to the next tab, you'll see under 2260, he's listed the same language. Under Tab 11, and Rosemary, I'm going very fast, I apologize. If you look at Board, if you'll go to the next tab, to 3122, he's been consistent in what he's done with all of his policies. If you go to Tab 12, under Anti-Harassment, he's listed the same policy reference of sex, including sexual orientation, transgender status, gender identity. In addition, if you look at the next tab, 4122, he's listed the same languages, sex, including sexual orientation, transgender status, gender identity. And obviously, 4362, he's carried that on. What's interesting, though, if you look at Tab 15, which is the Bully Policy, he doesn't list it in there. Mr. Clapp feels that, that sexual, or the discrimination notice is such in all of the other policies that he didn't need to leave it, put it in the Bully Policy. I would say we could either mirror that or even add it into that if you wanted to do that, if the decision of the Board is to add that language. But from his point of view, it doesn't, it wasn't necessary from the bullying harassment policy that he's proposed to us. And obviously, if you look at Tab 16, Anti-Harassment, under 5517 says the same thing. We're getting to the, close to the last tab, but if you look in Tab 17, I wanted to provide you with the list of school districts and what they're doing throughout Florida with regards to sexual orientation and transgender. I've taken, we've looked at several counties in regards to that. So you see with Hillsborough County, they have language in there for employees regarding sexual orientation and gender identity. For students, they do the same. Indian River does it very much the same. They reference those. Orange County does that as well, but they've also included expression. Osceola Schools for Employees, they include language for sexual orientation, gender identity, and for students, sexual orientation. Pasco County, when I say it's protected classes, it's everything but that. So race, religion, national origin. If you look in their policy, you will not find sexual orientation or gender identity. Polk has that, that language. Polk has that, that language, et cetera. Just to give you an example, if you pull behind the Hillsborough tab, you'll see their Board Policy 3122. Now, they've done something different than what I would recommend the Board if you're wanting to bring the language back. They've separated sexual orientation and gender identity from sex. I think it should be associated with sex because that's what the EEOC recommends. But they separated indicating that their Board does not discriminate on the base of race, color, religion, sex, age, national or ethnic origin, political beliefs, marital status, handicap, condition or disability, marital status, military status, sexual orientation, gender identity, genetic information, et cetera. So this is Hillsborough's policy. I'm not going to go to each one of their policies. I've highlighted them if you want to look at them at a later time, but you can see how they've done it. So for, on the next tab with Indian River, they have also got gender, including sexual orientation, transgendered. I believe Indian River is also a Neola customer, just like we are, so maybe they've adopted what Mr. Clapp has stated, et cetera. The last thing I want to talk to you about before I turn it over to Ms. Katakis really is behind tab 18. I thought it was an interesting pamphlet that was sent to us. Actually, this brochure was sent to us by Melinda Jacobs, who is the attorney that we use for our complicated exceptional education cases. So that's how we obtained it. I believe Mr. Beisline had sent it to you. I'm not sure. But in either case, there is a part of this, and this was a booklet that was put out by the National Schools, National School Boards Association entitled, "Transgendered Student in Schools." When I read through it, I thought the most important part when it comes to this really is, can be found on page seven. And I just thought, you know, because this is kind of where the issue seems to be for all of us to consider and it starts off, "Question, should a school Board's policy prohibit discrimination, harassment and bullying of transgendered students?" I liked how they phrased this because they said, "Federal law neither requires nor prohibits a school district from developing and implementing a school Board policy against discrimination, harassment and bullying of transgendered students. Such policy may be required or encouraged by your state." And I think where they go on to say, "As a school leader, you do your best to provide a safe educational environment for all students and to treat all students with dignity, respect, regardless of that student's sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, expression, transgender status, et cetera. You should consider approaching the approach to prohibiting discrimination and bullying of transgender students as you would for any other student with characteristics protected by law or recognized by your school community, to foster a sense of inclusiveness in the school environment, et cetera." I thought that statement that they gave was probably the best part of this pamphlet, so I wanted to highlight and give that to you. As I stated earlier, we are not required to do any of this by federal law or by state law or DOE regulations. Obviously, there's a lot of people who are on both sides of that issue. It's a complicated issue and one that's very emotional for a lot of people and I'm hoping the information I presented to you today would be helpful in you in deciding what you want to do with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can clarify one thing for the audience and also for the Board and for myself, Neola is an organization that we contract with that is charged with reviewing policy on a regular basis and bringing recommendations to us for policy change. And they comply with, I believe, state law requires policies to be reviewed every two years? Or is it every five?
They review their policies every year or as federal law changes. Actually, they'll receive...
I think there's a state requirement for Boards to review regularly.
Two years, Mr. Chairman.
Two years, it is two years. And so, but they review regularly. But you had, did I hear you correctly in saying that they have made submissions to us recommending these changes in the past and we didn't?
I believe so, but I was not part of that.
And that's what I also wanted to clarify so that people realize that wasn't your charge at the time, which then leads me to a quick Board discussion that when Neola does bring policies recommending for change, I believe that they should be brought to the Board for consideration. In that case, I don't believe they were. I believe that staff at that time decided they weren't coming forward and that should not happen. So let's clarify that going forward so there are no assumptions. The Board should make the decision on whether we accept recommended policies from Neola as we do from staff going forward. That's all I wanted to clarify there. Any other Board members have any questions or comments? Mrs. Belford.
Just a quick comment on the Neola issue as I have done a good amount of digging into the Neola recommendations and the process associated with those recommendations at this point in time and would certainly echo your sentiment on that and how things have been done in the past and probably how we need to do things going forward. Certainly with staff recommendation on what they believe as far as the Neola recommendation, but I do believe that the Board needs to be aware of those recommendations and make a determination. Additionally, part of our contract with Neola provides legal protection should we adopt policies that they recommend and there be any lawsuit associated with it. So our failure to adopt those policies also removes that legal protection for their policy recommendation.
Good point. Mr. Craig.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify, because there has been, and thank you, Mr. Langdorff, for your presentation, but there is some overlap or maybe some creep into what we're discussing. The policy discussion as outlined in the handout that guides us how Dr. Thede sees this going is specific to the bullying and anti-harassment and anti-discrimination of students. You've elected to include EEOC language and talk about employment as well. I want to make sure that we all understand why we're here and what it is we're discussing. If we're discussing both, so be it, but that's not what's on our discussion list. If you are using it as a template for an example to apply to a student, then I'd ask you to provide the legal means of how those connect. Otherwise, we're talking about two separate issues. Can we make sure we're all on the same page here?
Yeah, and if staff could address that, because I had brought that up also, that while there is a relationship between the two issues, I do think they're separate conversations because there are things that apply to one that may not necessarily apply to the other, especially when it comes to students.
I would say this when it comes to that. The Office of Civil Rights would be the one that would investigate a student-related issue. They would fall under the same line of recommendations for the students as the EEOC. So I guess I included those as one and all, kind of a catch-all. I didn't look at the OCR's position because I've certainly seen OCR's positions on that. If you wanted me to provide a list of what they would consider discriminatory and what they would investigate, I can do that. Obviously, I didn't do that today.
Go ahead.
I worked with Dr. Thede on the outline of the workshop and I guess the reason why these came up is that a year ago, when we started talking about these, it was just bullying in students. And then as we moved forward, Mr. Ziegler brought in the employee issue. And so as we got to this workshop, both items had been presented. And so I felt we needed to, since both items had been brought forward, I felt like we needed to discuss both items and put one or both of them to rest. So I felt after discussing with Dr. Thede, I'll take ownership of this, John and Mr. Craig, I thought we needed to discuss both of them, so we're doing this one and getting it off the table one way or another, since it was a policy issue, before we get into the student issue. So that's why it's on the table today.
Okay. So we are discussing both employee and student?
Correct. And the reason that I had brought it up originally and we think it's important to be part of the conversation is because I believe the Board agrees that our employees are just as important as our students and they're going to be eagerly wanting to know how we feel about them and how we're going to support them, just like we want to support our kids. However, the end solution, of course, may be different because there are slightly different applications.
Okay, and I agree with that. It's just that that's not what is in the handout in the presentation. It is specific to students. So I just want to make sure we, if we're going to go down that road, then we need to have probably another workshop to discuss that.
No, we may.
In my intro, I talked about both employee and student policies because one of the outcomes, hopefully out of this meeting, is direction moving forward for both sets of policies one way or another.
Okay. Okay, any other comments about Mr. Langdorff's presentation?
Thank you.
Mrs. Neese, go ahead.
Two comments. I'll just make a comment that I like. I like consistency. I'm very concrete sequential, so I like the consistency that Neola has. I know you've mentioned before that you were going to try to combine some policy. You saw a lot of overlap. Any of the policies, are you looking at doing any combining or are the policies you're looking at, they would be standalone going forward?
Frankly, I'm waiting for the Board's direction. Obviously, I presented to you the recommendation that I made in January and obviously, that was voted down, so I'm now waiting for you to tell me what you would like me to look at. I can certainly look at every policy that Neola has put out. I can provide you, if you want to find out what Neola's recommendation is, I can list that when I bring it back to you for information, if you choose to do so, along with my recommendations for change in that particular policy, along all of those policies. Some of those policies are the 4000s in Neola. We no longer have the 4000s. So some things may not be there, but I would certainly do that if I receive that requirement to bring that for you for information and then possibly for action.
I think what I like about what you did is that it's not adding additional words per se to the employee policies. It's just taking what's already there and further defining what the definition of sex is in the policy. And it's coming strictly out of what the EEOC says. And if I understood the news today and directly out of what the President said yesterday, there's going to be further push from the federal government that this is in our policies. Is that how you took the news yesterday and what I'm hearing this morning?
I wish I could say I listened to that news yesterday. I did not. So I'm assuming if that's, I think that is the push where the federal government has gone. Obviously, the Office of Civil Rights and the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission takes their charge from the President of the United States as he's their boss. So I'm assuming, based on what I've seen as far as decisions are concerned, that is the direction both of those agencies are moving.
Okay. I just, I'm going to just add, although I don't think we're at a point of necessarily giving direction at this point, there's a lot more to hear, but I see two schools of thought on where we're at and what we need to do, one of which is where you've just discussed is the compliance portion of this with statute, whatever it may be. And as Mrs. Belford stated, there's also the liability that we need to mitigate by properly handling policy on this. And then is on the other side is as Dr. Blackburn said, is that there's been commonality amongst all people on this issue that all children matter and, you know, that we want to find a way to make sure all students feel supported and loved. And that is separate possibly from the policy and the compliance and the liability. And so I guess that'll be the next thing we start talking about, Mrs. Thede, is how we're going to, Dr. Thede, I'm sorry. Got to get that straight. She works very hard, I apologize. So...
Yeah, John wants to weigh in.
John?
Just had one last thing, just to clarify for the record, in January, nothing was voted down.
Thank you.
We did not vote on anything. It was, it was just not forwarded. So we did not make a decision either way. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And I apologize because...
I know, I'm just making sure that's clarified because sometimes that could get reported as we voted something down and we didn't. Can you tell me, where do you get your definitions for each category of nondiscrimination, say disability, religion, sex? Where do your specific, in your department, where do you get the specific definitions?
And that goes back, if you look actually in tab two, or no, let me look at it, in tab three, where you'll see the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunities Commission's web page. So if you want to find out where I got those definitions from, on the bottom of that page, page one of tab three, if you put in that email or that web address and then click under each one of those, that's where you'll find the definitions that I got that from.
That's for sex. What about disability?
It would be the same.
That's where you personally go?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we know.
My, and the reason why I do that is part of my job is to make sure that when we have those complaints, if they're elevated to the point where there could be litigation or if there's questions in any one of those particular areas, a lot of times they'll come to me and I will analyze the details and decide whether we should try to resolve that or not. So that's part of what I do in addition to the communications I have with either Mr. Beisline or Mike Bowling, especially for complicated issues. I'm certainly not legal counsel, that's why I have Mike's number well memorized.
Okay, and using that as a template, then do you go back and make sure that there is not a state definition that varies from that?
I'll look at, if there is a state definition, I'll look at that as well. Most of the, most of the time, well, and for example, under the EEOC and FCHR, those are the two agencies. One is the Florida Commission on Human Relations and the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. Both of those are sister agencies. One deals with state issues, but they basically mirror exactly what the EEOC says. So when we have a discrimination case against an employee, for example, they can bring it under the FCHR or EEOC. They both look at the definitions in the very same manner. So that's why I would look at EEOC because they're going to be mirrored with FCHR.
Okay, but the definitions in the state of Florida may vary than what the United States government may define, is that correct?
There could be some variance.
So if they vary, do you defer to the state or the federal definition?
I would probably defer to the state for issues that are brought under 76828. If it's brought under the federal, which is under the, under a Title IX, or not so much a Title IX, but a Title VII or a Title VI, then I would definitely look at what the federal government is saying because that's where the difference would be, is whichever court it's filed in.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Mrs. Neese.
Mr. Lang, maybe you're going to do this later on, but before we move on to the student policies, given your answers to the questions that were posed earlier, I believe you've answered this in writing, but I guess I want it on the record here. You've led me to believe on the questions here is that you would support moving forward with the changes to the employee policies. I just don't want to put those words in your mouth here, but since we're paying for your time here this morning, I guess I want it for the record, would, do you believe we ought to go forward with the Neola changes to the employee policies?
I've seen a lot of policy language.
Can you talk into the microphone, put it real close to your mouth, please?
As to the specific language of whatever policy, I've seen a lot of them. They've been changed over the periods that we've been working on them, but the inclusion of protection of transgender and sexual preference should be included in the policy, in my opinion.
Because?
Because that's the way the law is going and it should, and policies as far as I understand it are for guidance to assist your staff and teachers and administrators in making the right decisions and including these things and these protections in the policies, I think would be helpful. Now, if you're asking me, is it legally required that you include this language in the policy, and I think I may be jumping ahead, the answer is no, not at this point in time.
Okay. And I know we're going to get into that later, but I just kind of, and I don't know at what point, we're going to get, we're going to get to that after we go through the bullying and harassment.
After we go through the bullying and harassment pieces and the staff and student voice. Mrs. Katakis.
Good morning. Along with...
That one's not on. Listen to the...
Much better.
Along with the community concerns regarding the nondiscrimination policies, we've also heard concerns regarding the bullying and harassment of our LGBT students. So I'd like to speak to you about Brevard's Policy 551701 that prohibits bullying and harassment of all Brevard Public School students. First of all... School students. First of all, Brevard's bullying policy follows the state model and template that has been approved by the state. The language for this policy comes directly from Florida State statute, known as the Jeffrey Johnson Stand Up For All Students Act, which was passed in legislation in 2008. And this legislation required that all districts institute anti-bullying procedures, and specifically ban harassment and intimidation. Specifically define bullying and harassment, create a diligent reporting procedure, require prompt investigation of allegations, and outline consequences for students and school employees who violate the policy. In order for our district to receive safe schools funding, which helps pay for our secondary deans and also our school resource officers, we must comply with state requirements for investigating and reporting bullying incidents. Districts throughout the state are monitored by the Florida Department of Ed to ensure district and school procedures are met. As a matter of fact, we were monitored last spring by FLDOE, and we were found to be in compliance with the state statute regarding our investigation and reporting procedures. Bullying investigation procedures, PowerPoints, and forms for district employees are located on the Student Services Intranet site. Parent and student forums and information are on the parent and student portals. Bullying investigations and reporting updates, as well as trainings for all of our administrators, are given annually. And our office also provides technical assistance to schools for reporting investigations. I'd like to briefly summarize the steps of an investigation that occurs at the school level. When a report of bullying is received, and it can be received from a student, a teacher, a parent, employee, a reporting form is used and filled out, and that to document the alleged incident. Once that is completed, a school administrator conducts the investigation, which includes gathering information from the accused and the witness. Once the data is collected and reviewed, the administrator completes the incident investigation form, and a decision is made as to whether the incident rises to the level of bullying, which is repeated in balance of power that is purposeful. Once an incident is reported by legislation, schools have 15 days from the initial complaint to complete the report, and then notify all parties involved with the outcome of the investigation. When a bullying investigation is completed, the event must be entered into our AS400 student data system, and then the report is physically sent to the Office of Risk Management and reviewed by Mr. Langdorff's office. If there's questions or concerns or errors with the report, the report is flagged, sent to Student Services, and at that point, we review, further review and communicate with the schools any errors with reporting or any recommendations for improvement. These bullying incidents throughout the district are also reported to the Florida Department of Education. There are five different state-defined reporting categories that are used when reporting the type of bullying and harassment incidents. They're defined as bullying harassment that is based on race, a student's disability, religion, could be of a sexual nature, sexual preference, which was a definition that was added into legislation by the state in 2014-15, and then the category "other." To date this year, we have had 314 victims of bullying reported, and of those, seven were reported as of a sexual, based on sexual preference. Thirty-six were based on incidents of a sexual nature. The majority of bullying incidents fell under the category "other." As far as the number of incidents reported thus far this year, we have a total of 471 reports of bullying that have been reported since the beginning of the school year. That's in line with the last three years. It's increased a little bit every year, which is a positive. Consequences assigned for bullying range from placement in an alternative learning center to a student conference, with suspension and parent conference the most frequently assigned consequences assigned. Safety plans for the victim are most often put in place to ensure that the student involved in a report of bullying is protected. A stay-away contract for the accused that requires no contact with the victim may also be put in place, and both documents require parental consent. Moving forward to next year, there are changes to the bullying and harassment law reflected in House Bill 229 that'll go into effect July 1. These changes will require districts to review existing policies every three years, and involve students, parents, teachers, administrators, law enforcement, and community members to improve the process. In addition, an authorized list of prevention programs that provide instruction on identifying and preventing and responding to bullying or harassment must be provided, and language requiring each school principal be responsible for implementing the policy in a manner that is ongoing throughout the school year, and specific procedures for receiving reports. The facilitation of the policy review and implementation will be handled through the Office of Student Services. We will receive sample language from the Florida Department of Education prior to putting together a committee to review and update our current language. As the Office of Student Services develops our trainings next year for administrators, we are going to work with the Office of District Communications to kind of update our... We have PowerPoints that are posted on the district website. We want to update those, give them a facelift, and make them more interactive. And we do realize we need to spend more time making sure schools are coding their incidents correctly, and also provide support to schools that may be underreporting. Over the last four years, we have made, you know, great strides in the investigation process. It is a time-consuming process at the school level, and it's taken a lot of training and a lot of support, but we've seen improvements, and we've seen more schools falling into line with the procedures that we have put into place. We're still fine-tuning, we're still working on it, and we plan to continue to work with schools throughout the coming school years for support. And I think our message that we want to continue to put across to schools, regardless of how the language has changed or not changed, is that we want to be respectful to all students and parents, that we, you know, will compromise when needed, while the courts are still deciding which decisions are to be made, that we're going to continue to train staff and board members, and that we won't permit teachers and staff to voice or impose their personal beliefs or religious views in the process. I'm gonna turn it over now to Dr. Theddy, and she's going to talk about staff voice and their concerns.
Two things before I do that. First is a point of clarification. Mrs. Katakis mentioned that our numbers have been increasing, and that's a positive. It's a positive because we have focused so much attention on making sure that schools are accurately reporting, and that students are feeling comfortable making their reports of bullying to the schools. And part of that is making sure that we're following up, as Mrs. Katakis mentioned, but I saw the looks about her saying it was positive, and it's positive because it tells me that we are making improvements in, number one, having students and parents make reports, and number two, in our reporting of that back to our system so that we can analyze and make sure our students are protected. And the other thing I wanted to say about our anti-bullying and harassment policies, they're for all students all the time. And I think that's really important to mention, because while the state model policy does not specifically refer to sexual orientation or gender identity in it, there is a data reporting element that came into play two school years ago, 14-15. This is our second year of reporting sexual preference as being an element under which we report if a student indicates they're being bullied for that reason. So the policy doesn't have it in there, but it does speak to it in the reporting mechanism. And as that was updated, we updated our policy, not our policy, our procedures, so that schools knew exactly what they needed to do in reporting when a student indicates that they've been bullied for a reason of sexual preference. Did you have any questions before I go on to Staff and Student Voice, before we...
Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mrs. Katakis. Real quick, is there a consistent consequence for the levels of bullying and/or harassment that occur? Meaning, is it common knowledge among every principal in the entire district that this is the consequence, or is it on an individual basis for each case?
Well, it's really on an individual basis, because the nature of the incidents varies so much. It can, you know, depends on the severity of the bullying and the nature of it. But we have had students that are placed in ALC this year for bullying, and then we have students who have been called in for a parent, a student conference.
So then, you mentioned a threshold. Where is the definition of the thresholds, then, for what is considered severe? You just mentioned severe. What would you... Where is that defined?
I don't, we don't have a defined definition for that threshold. It's a school-based decision.
Okay. Second question, sorry. Prevention. If a bullying case is opened, is that only opened when a event has occurred, or let's say there is teacher knowledge of something going on in the classroom before somebody reports it? Are we training our teachers and our staff to get ahead of a problem by looking for preventive measures before an actual incident occurs and before that reporting might happen?
Well, of course, that's the best case, that we want intervention upfront. We do have training that teachers are required to view each year prior to the beginning of the school year on handling bullying situations in the classroom. Again, it's something we need to continue to teach and provide training on at the school level, but as far as teachers making reports, they can handle the situation in their class. If it's not taken care of at the classroom level, then it can be reported and a formal investigation would take place.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Belfort?
Just a quick question. You mentioned, this is looking specifically at our bullying and harassment policy. Do we do any sort of tracking on incidents that don't elevate to the bullying level?
Well, all the incidents, if there's an incident reported and it's unsubstantiated, it is still, we still track that data, and it's still put in AS400. So every report that is started or investigation is put in AS400, whether it's substantiated or unsubstantiated. So we do track that information as far as the number of reports that come forward. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. So, but that's specific to bullying and harassment, where someone says, "I have this ongoing issue with someone," correct? So, if a student is walking down the hall and eight different students make a comment to that student over the course of a month, we don't consider that bullying, because it's not the same, it's not intentional, it's not repeated, but the same two individuals. So do we do, and I don't see how we could reasonably, do any tracking at the school level of those things that don't elevate to what administration may think could potentially be considered bullying?
Well, first of all, if a student reports that eight different students made a comment to them, that would fall into line with our definition for bullying, because if it's more than one student and it's all happening at the same time, that would constitute an investigation for bullying. Harassment, which is also falls in that same category, can be just a one-time incident. So we could still move forward with an investigation if it was just, you know, a harassment problem where a student said something very hurtful, or, you know, very derogatory to a student. It could still move forward.
So at a micro level, if my daughter's sitting in class and the student next to her says, "I don't like you because you're fat," and my daughter's not fat, which is why I use her as an example, because it can't be construed that way, but just to make a point, we're not going to track that. We can't, we can't possibly, as an organization, keep track of every instance that's happening between students in the hallways, out on the, you know, the PE field, on the...
Right.
So, we're looking at a microcosm of what's actually taking place.
Right.
Would that be accurate?
And so in that case, if your daughter comes to school every day, and the next day, and that's being said, then that's the case where, yes, it would move forward into an investigation or more severe consequences for the student that's causing the, you know, staying in inappropriate comments.
So there's a continuum of severity and reporting level, depending on frequency and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would just like to make a comment, because I've heard this, but not substantiated it. It's not my place to do that. I'm sure maybe other board members have heard from staff, teachers, and schools that there's a concern that some student behaviors are not acknowledged by administration in a school, and their belief, of course, is that the administration doesn't want to acknowledge it because they want their school to look like it's doing great. And I can understand that's human nature of a leader of an organization, a school, to feel that way, that they want to be the shining example in the district and have great statistics and all that stuff. But that doesn't bode well to helping students. How do we solve that? How do we send a message that they are not going to be penalized, because, yes, the statistics going up, I think that's a good thing, because hopefully, it means that students, in fact, they feel more comfortable speaking up. But how do we nurture more of that? Dr. Blackburn?
So this has come up, you know, a couple of times here in this conversation, and my assessment of the situation through listening and learning and reviewing of data is that across the system today, we have great variance in how individual disciplinary infractions are handled, school by school, across the system. That's certainly a challenge. And we're seeking, one is approved, to address that in the strategic plan by creating a systemic standard for what consequences will happen when certain student behaviors happen. And then, so creating that standard, creating that expectation, will help to identify when one teacher, one administrator decides not to address an issue. If the board, and I hope to make it policy, so the board states that this behavior is a concern, then superintendent nor staff, we won't have the opportunity to not address the behavior. The board would have spoken at that point. And working with Dr. Theddy and a wide host of people, we want to create such a document, such an expectation as well.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment related to that as well. As far as the data go, you know, we talked about the positive that the data would be, the numbers would be increasing. And I'm jumping ahead to our solutions moving forward, but one of the things that's really important is that we have accurate data reporting, regardless of how it makes us look. Because we have a place to go if we have accurate data reporting. And if we have a school that is underreporting, and that has been a problem that we're addressing and trying to rectify with bullying, because of that perception, that's something that we are going to talk about in a couple minutes, related to moving forward, that we want to make sure everybody understands, principals, teachers, parents, everybody, that our information has to be accurate, regardless of how it makes us look. And if it makes us look really bad, that's an opportunity for growth, and we need to address it. We need to put procedures and processes in place, supports in place at that school or schools, to assist them in moving forward. But we do have to have accurate data. So I hear your concern. It is a concern we share. It's a concern the principals share, too. And, you know, we'll work on strengthening that moving forward, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. I had the opportunity, I want to present a little bit about staff voice, and then Janine Knight is going to talk with you about student voice. I've had the opportunity to speak with all of our principals at this point, in small-area meetings and in a large leadership team meeting. I also had the opportunity to speak with several principals individually, with some teachers individually, with some resource teachers who have communicated with teachers in the field, and with principals who have shared with me their, the views of their teachers in their schools. And the main thing that I got from everybody is, as far as our principals and our teachers are concerned, all students means all students. And they believe very firmly that their job is to educate all students, to protect all students, to make sure all students are safe. They want guidance, absolutely, and how to make that happen to the best of their abilities, but they endeavor every day to make sure that our students come to school, feel safe, or if they don't feel safe, that there's a mechanism for them to report that and get the assistance that they need. Basically, the comments of both principals and teachers organize... Basically, the principals, the comments of both principals and teachers organized for me around a couple of common themes. In addition to the all means all, they, they felt like we've got anti-bullying and anti-harassment policies that address all students. They feel very strongly that when we're here for all students all the time, they don't necessarily believe that they need additional language to enforce what they're already trying to enforce. They, they feel like, I heard over and over again, that our policies and procedures, especially around the students and around bullying and harassment, do protect all students when they know about it. And, you know, they will tell, they told me, they'll tell you too. They're not 100% perfect, we're not 100% perfect. But they do try, when they are aware of an incident, they try to address it. And going back to, to Mrs. Belfort's comment about, you know, kids in the hallway, if, if a principal or a teacher's not aware of that comment because a, a student doesn't share that or doesn't bring it to their attention, sometimes that's a challenge we wrestle with. And so we've got some education of students to do as well, to make sure they understand that they do have rights and they do have responsibilities for reporting. Another common theme that I heard from everybody, from, from athletic coaches, to club sponsors, to principals, to teachers in the classroom, had to do with restrooms, locker rooms, and overnight field trips. And that is something that Mr. Bowling will refer to in his discussions in a few minutes. But they, they also had common questions around legal names versus preferred names, use of pronouns, what's acceptable, what's not, and really understanding what is, what they should be doing to best support LGBTQ students along with every other student. It was pretty overwhelming as far as that goes. You know, the concerns were guidance, they would like, teachers, coaches, and principals would like guidance on what to do in cases of students in restrooms, locker rooms, and overnight field trips. They would like to have guidance on how to handle legal versus preferred names, how to reflect student records. They would like guidance on how to, you know, understanding, really, they want awareness on how to address students in the appropriate manner, so that they are meeting the needs of their students. So what I found when I, when I met with our staff and our, our principals, I found that they are a very inclusive group of people. They want the right things for the, for students all the time. They just want a little bit of direction in how to achieve the right things for all students all the time. Mrs. Knight, do you want to talk a little bit about staff, uh, student voice?
Sure. Oh, mine works. Yeah, it, well, first of all, good morning. And it's really my honor to get to be the, the student voice today. Probably isn't a surprise to you that I'm not a student, but I get to be their voice today, and I think that's, is an extremely important job today. And I appreciate the comments that folks have made so far today. Dr. Blackburn's opening remarks, I appreciate those types of things. And I, I've had the privilege and honor and joy of getting to talk to students all the time, not just in regards to the non-discrimination policy, but just about all kinds of things, about the things that happen in their life. We don't live their life. This is a different generation, they've come through different things than many of us have, whether it's technology-related or whatever, there, there's a divide. And that's okay, because there's always been a divide in generations and things like that. But after meeting with the students, some of the things that they had to say, which as always, if you have any high school students in your life, you know that they have opinions, and they have, they seem to know a lot. So not long ago, I sat down in my son's room, who's a senior, and he said, "What are you doing in here?" And I said, "I just wanted to be around someone who knew everything." He told me to get out. So, so anyhow, so some of the things that the, that the students said kind of resonates a little bit with what the, the staff voice was also. But one of the areas was the addition to the gay-straight alliance clubs, the GSA clubs that, that are in our high schools, and enhancing some of those clubs. And students offered to assist other schools in enhancing those clubs, if that was necessary. The other area was that students expressed their need for the adults who are around them, the staff, school counselors, any of the staff that, that is around them on a daily basis, to have a, an awareness, a different awareness of the LGBTQ community, the, the language, some of the terminology, some of the support systems that are in place out there. And they really expressed a, a need for the adults to have a different understanding of, of that community. And part of, out of that conversation came that they, many of the students said that their concerns are with the adults in their lives, not their peers. The peers may tease them, but they collectively said, "They tease us about all kinds of things." And that's not uncommon. And so their, I think their heightened concern was really more in regards to the adults in their lives, and the adults that, you know, are with them every day in school, having them have a better understanding of the LGBTQ community, and, and, you know, who they are, and who they've always been, you know? And so that was a concern. And then the transgender students that I was able to, to talk to, which I've talked to all along, they would like to be called, you know, by the name that they identify with, the pronouns that they identify with. I think a lot of them have felt that, again, the, their peers, although may, you know, in the beginning have some, you know, concerns, or maybe make some comments, they kind of get over it and move forward. But the adults seem to not quite be there. And so that was a, a concern that they had. And really helping the adults, and, and when I say I talk to all students, I, I talk to all students. I, I hate to separate out anybody in particular, because I really don't know who's in the LGBTQ community, you know, I really don't. And so it's, I think their main concern was just being acknowledged and just feeling as if they belong. So that's, kind of covers, I think, most of it. It's not, not everything they said, because I could be here for a long time. Yeah. Going on and on. But like I said, when I started out, definitely, you know, the students today have come through a different, a different place, I think, than, than, than most of us. You know, these are kids who have grown up since 9/11. The majority of them were born right around that time, or a little bit before. And it's a different place. You know, they see things differently, and they have access to things differently. So even though there's always a generational divide, I think, I think this one might be a little bit different. So, that's their voice. Any questions that I might be able to bring out?
Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Ms. Knight. How did you go about doing this? Who did you talk to? How did you pick the, was it during-school, after-school combination?
A little bit of both.
Just interested in how, how the sampling came about?
A little bit of both. My position is, I am very lucky in the Office of Student Services. I get to do a variety of, of activities. So most of my time is spent out in schools. And so some of it was just conversation in general. And it, and it really didn't, I didn't really specifically talk to them about, like, LGBTQ. It was more about discrimination in, in general. And interestingly, when that topic came up, it was more along the lines of, they see discrimination as more an individual kind of thing, like the, the music they listen to, or the clothes they wear, you know, that type of thing. I did have the opportunity to go to a community group of, of students and young adults that's here in the community that is, is like a social group. And so I was able to go there and just talk to some of the students that way. And then, in just a minute, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the, the programs that we have. And one of the areas that we started a number of years ago, I think this will be our fifth year now, is the youth leadership groups around the topic of anti-bullying. And so every middle and high school has a group in their school that has been identified to assist with that issue in their school. And as you can imagine, they're not called anti-bullying clubs, because no one would join them. But they have names, you know, like, whatever their mascot might be, you know, the names of their clubs and things like that. And so that's a group I work very closely with. I spend a lot of time with those kids. So that conversation came up in, in regards to, you know, talking to kids about the LGBT community, you know, those kinds of things. So I guess that's, I wouldn't say there was, like, a scientific sample, it's just the kids I talk to.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, when you're speaking with these kids and you're talking about discrimination and you're talking about bullying, do they see a difference between the two, or they just lump that all as one conversation?
Probably they lump it more together. It's, it's really interesting, and again, I'm not a researcher, it's not scientific. But students really see the issue of bullying, I think, very differently than we do as adults. One, the level, the intensity of things is different because of social media. You know, maybe in our generation, we could get away from it, you know? Maybe it happened at school, but then I went home and I had a supportive family. Maybe I was in a sporting event outside of school, so I was able to separate from it. They, they aren't able to separate from it because of social media. And I think the intensity on social media is, is very different. And I think for them, it's, it's, it's sad to say, but it's almost kind of part of their life, like this language they use amongst each other, is this kind of part of their life. So sometimes when, when I talk with the students, and I say bullying, they'll say, "That's not bullying." You know, they'll be like, "That's just how we talk to each other," you know, "Or that's just what we say." So it's, it's, it's interesting, and I think helping educate the kids too on what it is and how someone perceives something. I think that's the key, is that it's someone's individual perception on, on that.
Do you, you say you think students see bullying differently than we do as adults, then you kept talking about the social media. Is that just because of the generational, that we're not, you're implying we're not aware of the types of bullying that they're encountering, because we didn't have that when we were kids?
I, I think partially that. I think some of things, some of the things that I've heard students say is, because they socialize in such a different way, it isn't face-to-face, that their ability to say things that they may not say face-to-face occurs. But it's almost as if sometimes they're not realizing it because, and this doesn't sound right, but I'm not saying everyone's doing it, that's not what I mean, it's just that everyone is on social media. So they're seeing lots of different things on social media that is maybe changing their perception of, of what they think bullying is versus maybe what we think it is. And the other thing I hear a lot from the students is, they sort of just move past it. They're like, "It happened, okay," you know, and then they move on. Sometimes the adults that tend to, like, hang on to it, you know, which, I mean, I understand. I mean, I've had some, I mean, I've had parents who I've talked to, and they're like, you know, "I want to say this is bullying, I want to report this girl bullying." And when I take, you know, my daughter and her to the movies on Friday night, and I'm like, "Okay, you take them together to the movies, but you want to report her as a bully?" I don't get that, you know? Because sometimes the adults can't let it go, maybe because of the experiences they had in their life.
So you're, you're saying, as we all know, that, that adults tend to maybe make problems in students' lives that they don't see as problems?
No.
No.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, we see.
Mrs. Nisi?
Mr. Craig, there was also a very good meeting hosted here at Vieira, where all the students were invited from around the county, from all the various schools. Dr. Blackburn and I were able to attend that one also, where we had a good mix of students from both elementary, middle, and high school, that it was just an open session for them to share their thoughts, their feelings on this issue. And a lot of good information was gathered on that.
Thank you. Did you talk to student government leaders?
Probably there are some in there. Like I said, I don't separate them out in the, the youth leadership groups. Some of the schools infuse those groups, and they've done it different ways, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just going to point out, because you, in, in talking about social media, that's the written word. We even, I think, as adults, have a tendency to send emails or correspondence or text message that the recipient somehow interprets differently than the intent of the message, and then could possibly get very offended by what you said, and you have no idea why. And I don't know how we solve that problem. But it's clearly a problem in society where they, that impersonal communication is creating problems and possibly bullying where it's not intended. Now, of course, there's plenty of social media, even on, especially on the elected level, where bullying is very alive and well. But that's, you know, we're clear about that. But, you know, I know I've sent emails to people, and they say, they go, they're just, they're mortified at the email. And I'm looking at the email and go, "How did I not see the negative that they're seeing in that correspondence?" Not something we were ever educated about when we were younger. And I don't know if that's even something we can address as far in an educational process, but unless, unless that's addressed, I, I think society's going down a, a very bad road, because everybody thinks that there's a negative implication in almost every, every correspondence. And so I know, I personally, I'll write something, I'll put it aside, I'll come back and I'll, I'll read it again. And then, and then, and I might go on a few iterations before I send it, just to make sure that it can't be taken incorrectly.
All caps. People think you're angry.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. When you get it all caps, you feel like you're being yelled at. That's a, that's a, that's a good point. Moving forward.
I think one final comment before I turn it over, unless, Mrs. Nisi, were you going to ask a question? Okay. Okay. One final comment is, to me, it's interesting that the feedback I got from staff and principals was very similar to the feedback that Janine Knight got from students. You know, they, they want, everybody wants an awareness. And so I think as far as that goes, we're on the same page. You know, we just have to strengthen our process and procedures. And, you know, I, we're kind of running out of time on our part. So we're going to go to the process and procedures moving forward, and then we're going to turn it over to Mr. Bowling to discuss the legalities.
Okay, I'll talk quickly, I hope, sorry. I mentioned the youth leadership groups that we have, and we've had those now for, I think this will be our fifth year. And we have the students come here the early part of the school year. I think this next year, it's on September 13th, I believe. So I know Mr. Ziegler has attended those in the past, and you're all welcome to attend, to see what the students have to say. They always like when somebody with a title comes, because then they can say something. We also... Um, we also have always, um, uh, or in the past couple of years, we have a training at the beginning of school also for the deans of discipline, uh, and the APs at elementary school for discipline. And we always have, uh, a section on bullying and harassment and reporting and, um, those types of things. And we're enhancing that again this year because of the new legislation that's coming out. So things are always changing and different topics are always coming up, so we'll be enhancing that also. And then we also have a, um, uh, in-service for school counselors in the fall, and we'll be enhancing some of the areas that we, um, uh, give them information on at that time that's coming up also. And those are things that we've, like I said, we've, we've been doing those for a number of years. And then the last thing, um, one of the things that the kids did say is, is getting resources to the schools in regards to support groups. So, um, we're going to be enhancing that also for school counselors to have, uh, information on, uh, agencies that support students in the LGBTQ community.
Good morning. We have a unique opportunity, um, we being Student Services, starting this summer, under the direction of Dr. Blackburn, to focus on social-emotional affective side, affective side of education. Social-emotional learning is the process for learning new skills. It's the process of understanding ourselves, others, the relationships we have with others. And, um, I heard Mr. Ziegler say earlier that we want students to feel loved. And while I agree with that, I take it a step further to our mission to serve every student with excellence, that we also have to provide acceptance, and we have to provide inclusion for all students. If you're walking down the hallway, as Ms. Belford said, and eight students call you a name, and two of them follow you into your next class, it's very difficult to engage in a learning environment and be set up academically. So one of the things that we're able to do this summer through our Leadership Institute that we host for our administrators and teacher leaders, will be focusing 100% on the affective side, social-emotional learning, um, talking about the topics that Ms. Knight just covered, looking at social media and the effect. So with that divide that we have, we're able to hopefully not only bridge some of the gap between this generation and ours, but also provide research, empirical, research-based strategies that schools can implement, that can have on hand, to provide the support from our office, so that teachers and schools address the needs of all students, so that everyone feels accepted. The other thing that we will be doing, um, we have the proposed strategic plan objective, um, one D, that is social and emotional equity and supports for all students. And so working through a process with the boards, blessing once that goes through, to really help provide supports. Um, it's very difficult to teach social-emotional and relationship and positive awareness of kids and their needs when you don't have the tools, the materials, the time, and the resources at schools. And so through our strategic plan objective, that's one of the things that we will be gearing up and working with our principal schools and students on, what they need to provide the supports. Any questions? Mr. Ziegler?
Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Can you tell me, is dyslexia a, a defined disability by the state of Florida?
Dyslexia is a medical term used, um, under the heading of the eligibility for specific learning disabilities. Um, we have changed in the state of Florida a little bit to make sure that we add that. So when you're talking, if you're in the world of exceptional student education and understand the individual education process, in the PLEP, you would notice, um, that's our performance area of where the student strengths and weaknesses lie and where we need to go forward. Um, we would put that terminology in there and then make sure that we are providing the resource, the supports, and the special education services beyond accommodations, um, for that student to be successful. It is a weak area in Brevard. We do have, um, training planned that we're moving forward for our guidance counselors, our resource teachers, our support specialist. And then this summer, I have resource teachers that will be putting toolkits together, um, to start training our schools on how we serve our students who have, um, specific learning disabilities or have dyslexia as a medical diagnosis, and we can move forward with that.
Okay, so i- in, in a nutshell, uh, even though the state doesn't define dyslexia as a specific disability, we address it through our IEP process, through our school, through, uh, ongoing training and ongoing improvement of our procedures.
That is what should be happening. That's what should be happening, but we're weak in that area. So we do know we have to provide training.
Thanks.
You're welcome. It's part of the social-emotional objective. It's embedded in there, so I think that's where I saw some eyes across the board. In our strategic plan objective about providing equitable supports for all kids across the board, dyslexia is mentioned because that is a weak area and our kids are underserved right now, and so we have a plan in place to strengthen that.
I have a question, which hopefully will stir some conversation amongst everybody here. So, that's great that we're going to put things in place, we're going to have, uh, professional development with staff, educate them on handle, how to handle in, uh, these situations, how to make all students feel supported and loved and matter, that they matter, et cetera, et cetera. That, that's great, and that's important because while that is what we need to do, everybody has individual opinions, uh, on all of these issues, but they have to leave that at the door when they enter the school and then, and when they're, when they're overseeing students' lives, and they have to be able to let that student know, uh, that, that they're there for them. In other words, not, not to condone a lifestyle, and not to, certainly not to condemn a lifestyle, but to be there, and that's something that, that's, that training's going to, uh, be important for. But the important question in my mind is, is while that's all great from our perspective to handle it properly, how do we clearly communicate that to the students that we care? And I think that's probably the essence of what we need to do. How do we, the, the policy is nice, and obviously we have the legal side of that, which we're going to discuss a little more in the min- in a minute. And some people have implied, yes, the, the written word, even a policy, that some students may read that, but will they all? There's, so what are the mediums and the methodologies that we could use to convey clearly to students that the adults in the room are there to listen and to support them? Do we have any thoughts on how we're going to convey that to them? And does the board have any input on, thoughts on that? Because that's, I think, what we need to get out of this is, uh, and, and that's not something that we necessarily are going to, going to vote on, is, is a, a process or methodology, as opposed to we do vote on, on policy. How are we going to address that so that it's effective and, and, and helps all students in, no matter what their, whether it be a disability, or they wear glasses, or they, whatever, or they're LGBTQ, all students need to feel that. How do we convey that to all students?
That's a million-dollar question. With anything we do with a, a district as large as this, communication is always a worry. Um, so we want to make sure that we have highly strained, is, trained, not strained staff, but trained staff, um, that voice that out to the students. The student government, the youth leadership groups like that, that we can talk to, that we can support, help carry that through the student body, um, having multiple ways that they can speak to people, um, multiple venues to report issues, multiple venues to have a voice. You know, when we look at the school board, and we look at zero, zero tolerance policies, a lot of our students have a fear of speaking out on a variety of issues. They don't want to be that one. So holistically, with what Ms. Katakis and Dr. Thuddy spoke about earlier, and Dr. Blackburn with our discipline policies, also putting in place truly what is discipline, and what's that opportunity for the old-fashioned golden rule of being able to talk through a situation and let the student voice be heard. I think it speaks very loud, and we have some schools that are excellent at it in Brevard County, of having that opportunity for students to share why they made a decision or why they're not engaged in the curriculum beyond simply saying, you weren't engaged today, go to the dean's office. And so I think that speaks loudly when students start knowing they have a voice and they can talk to the adults. Um, that'll come with training, that comes with supporting from our department, that comes from being able to, to make a phone call to any of us and say, what do I do in this situation? And it's certainly, um, we can't leave the parents out and their voice to be able to understand the resources that Brevard Public Schools provides and be able to share that with their students and their communities.
I, I don't think that yet answers the question, but I think that's where we need to go.
I don't think there is an answer.
And I don't know if there's a definitive answer, and there might be multiple answers to the question, but I believe that's the, uh, that's the thing that our community wants to, wants to know because it's, yes, it's that.
Can I, I was just, is that okay? I was just going to say, um, I think something that, um, in our department, we learned a few years ago, is, um, one of the reasons we went to the youth leadership teams, I've been doing, um, anti-bullying presentations for a long time, and they don't listen to what I have to say. They listen to each other. And we have some, uh, youth leadership groups that are unbelievable, and they have been able to get that message out to each other, because they listen to each other. And so, um, in, in some of those groups, the change in the school has, has really been seen by kids who started in those groups when they were in ninth grade and now they're seniors. And it's, it's expressed through, through their peers, listening to their peers, who are really giving them the information from the adults. And I think that's one way to get that down there in a way that the kids will actually believe it.
Yeah. I've seen that, and I, I agree, those groups are working very well, and I was hoping that would be part of the solution, because I was very impressed with, uh, how the, the, when the students support each other, because you're right, kids don't really want to hear what we have to say. It's, you know, it's, that's when talking to your own kids, it's, they, all they hear is a la-la-la-la-la-la-la, and then, and, uh, they, you know, don't. Yeah, exactly. So, um, I'm glad that, I, I agree that, that's a medium that I think would be, uh, how you exactly do that, that's, let you all figure that out.
I, I definitely believe there's not a, a one answer to this question, because I think every school is different, every environment is different. I think some schools have further to go, and some are really already on the path. But I do think our kids are a major part of our solution. They have to be. And I think, quite honestly, our practitioners, practitioners in our classrooms, our teachers, are a, they have a large voice, and they know what's going on, and they're on the ground floor with everything that's going on with kids. And I think engaging them to a greater extent than we currently do is a, is, is part of the solution. But I think each individual school with kids and, and the staff, to include administration and others working together, is a large part of the solution with guidance, you know, they, with guidance and support from our office.
Mrs. Henderson, you look like you had a comment? Okay. Anybody else? Ready to get to the legal discussion?
Mr. Bowling.
Okay, then let's, uh, move on to the legal, and we can always come back and have discussion on any of this afterwards. Mr. Bowling?
Good morning. Uh, many of you know me, my name is Michael Bowling, uh, with the firm of Bell &amp; Roper, and I'm a litigation attorney, uh, which, which means my view of this area is a lot more narrow than your staff. Policies are, uh, are a management tool, in large part. You train your people, you, you guide them. Policies can be legal issue, depending on how they're written, how they're applied, things of that nature. My concerns with policies is, let's be frank, how it affects me when I try to defend you. So, the, the way I look at them is a little bit different. I, as, as an opening point, however, Dr. Blackburn made the correct notation at the beginning of this meeting. This is an issue that, that is being addressed, that I believe should be addressed, but does not need to be addressed. It can be ducked. There's no legal requirement that this, that your policies be made, amended, to reflect the law. Policies don't create law. Policies don't overrule law. The law is the law. The guy, the purpose of the policy is to guide your people so that they don't violate it. Now, the problem we're all facing here is, what's the law? Uh, and we're, and I'm focusing, obviously, on sexual orientation, transgender status. The law's a mess. And I don't know how it's to tell you, it's, it's my considered legal opinion after 35 years of practicing law. There are three sources of legal authority related to this issue. One is Title VII, which is employment. The other is Title IX, which is students. And the third is the equal, equal protection, which is a constitutional protection. The cases that are, that come out of these fact patterns involving sexual orientation or transgender, sometimes deal with the statute, sometimes deal with the constitution, that is equal protection clause, sometimes both. So it's very difficult to mix and match case law. The other problem is presented by the EEOC and the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. These are governmental agencies that are, that exist and have the authority to, uh, interpret statutes within their bailiwick. Now, the pronouncements of the EEOC or the OCR are not the law. This is where it gets, gets confused. Their opinions, their pronouncements, are entitled to deference. So, uh, if you have a case and the OCR has said, you must do this, the judge will typically look at the facts, consider the OCR's opinion, and if it is reasonable, go ahead and apply. If it is unreasonable, he did, does not necessarily have to. The deference concept is another complicated area of law. The amount of deference a court is required to, to provide to an agency interpretation is a function of whether the, the regulation being interpreted is ambiguous or not. If it's ambiguous, more deference is applied. If it's not ambiguous, less deference is implied. These things get very, as you, as you can tell, these things get very complicated, and, and the situation is up in the air. But not according to the OCR or the EEOC. So let's just, let's get this out of the way. The EEOC says transgender and, uh, and sexual preference is protected in employment settings, uh, throughout the country. It's that simple. You cannot discriminate in any fashion against a person based upon their transgender status or their, or their sexual preference. The OCR with regard to Title IX has held essentially the same. You cannot discriminate against students based upon transgender status or, uh, sexual preference. The case law interpreting Title VII and Title IX has been all over the place, and sometimes inexplicable, I'll be frank with you. There, 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 Title VII in the, in the, in, which, in the, in our circuit, which is the 11th Circuit, is, according to the courts, prohibits tran-, uh, discrimination against transgender individuals. Also, in, without question, Title, Title VII in the 11th Circuit does not, depending on which court you read, and most, the majority view is, it does not protect sexual preference. For the life of me, I really can't come up with a rationale for the distinction, other than the language of the statute and when the cases came on, but the law is, is confusing. Transgender status in Title IX, again, the OCR, simple rule, it's against the, against, it's protected, you must comply. The cases, and there are, and there are a few, uh, are split. Uh, as just came out a couple of days ago, the Fourth Circuit, uh, adopted the OCR's opinion and, and stated that, you know, that, uh, transgender status is protected and that, and that was a bathroom case, and that the students would be allowed to use, the transgender student should be allowed to use this, the bathroom of his, of his or her, uh, with which he has, with which, with which he identifies, or she identifies. So, there's a Third Circuit case, which is held otherwise at, at a lower level, which is on appeal, which has not yet been ruled on. So there's, that's where you are. There is no simple and clean answer. There are concerns, of course, as a governmental entity, if you don't comply with the regular, with the opinions or directives of the agencies, the OCR in particular, that they can do things to you, funding issues, uh, things of that nature. I've never been able to find a, a situation where the OCR has, hasn't I've never been able to find a situation where the OCR has in fact withdrawn funding from a governmental, from a school board for failing to comply, but it's certainly something they believe they have the power to do. That being said, I believe the law is going to provide protection to sexual preference and transgender individuals. The law has become more inclusive as the years have gone on. It's the way of the future. I think the school board is correct in looking at this issue now and dealing with it now and trying to guide its principals and administrators so that they don't, they don't create lawsuits down the road. There it is.
So can the district comply without putting in specific language via some of the tools that they were talking about?
There's no, there's no need for a policy. I mean, the law does not require a policy. The terror of a person like me, a litigation lawyer, is inconsistent actions throughout a school district. That's why I like policies. You can handle things on a case-by-case basis, but it's very difficult to defend a decision if at one school you did A and in another school you did B. I mean, that's my reason for advocating a policy.
But I could have policy, and I could still have that same issue.
Well, sure.
Right.
And that's what keeps me employed, but, in some sense.
Now, I understand that, but that is, the policy in and of itself is not going to correct any of this.
It's not a guarantee.
It's not a guarantee. That you could help us out anyway. Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you for responding to all our questions. I guess my, I go back to what you're saying about the future, but the future is not based on any legal precedent, is that correct? The future is based on your personal opinion?
Well, it's my opinion based upon what I've seen in the case law. My personal view is the least relevant thing in the room. I'm basing this upon the Supreme Court's recent decision finding equal protection right for gay marriage, which is indicative of a certain, a certain area, a certain indication of where they're going, where they're leaning. And the OCR and the EEOC, what they're pushing for.
Okay, so the, let's get to the EEOC and OCR. So there, as you just stated, they interpret statutes but are not the law.
Correct.
So isn't what you're suggesting exactly the same thing? You're asking us to interpret the law and not interpret the statutes on our own? That, that's what you're saying?
I'm, I guess to the extent that I'm recommending that you adopt a policy, I'm only doing it so that in the future it might avoid litigation. I mean, that's why I'm here. The, I'm only suggesting to you, I'm only telling you what they've said the law is going to be, the OCR and the EEOC. And I'm also pointing out that the courts are split. And in light of the Supreme Court's decision on gay marriage, I think it's an indication of the, of which direction the trains go. And I'm making the recommendation in an effort to avoid possible litigation by not recognizing what the law is may develop into being. But again, I can't, I can't tell you what the law's gonna be. I mean, it's only my opinion based upon my practice.
Right. So, again, I just want, your recommendation, though, is for us to make our own interpretation, just as the EEOC and the OCR has determined, maybe using theirs as a litmus test or a template, but you're asking, or you're suggesting, I'm not saying you're asking, you're suggesting, your professional recommendation is that this five-body, five-member body interprets a law before the law has actually been interpreted by an actual legal source? Is that what you're, is that the suggestion? Much as you just said, the EEOC is interpreting statute and does not make law.
As, frankly, as I said, there's no need to do anything. If the decision is not to do anything, that's fine. The law is going to be the law. My recommendation is that you, is that you provide guidance to your staff so they know what to do. And in my legal opinion is that what they're going to need to do is recognize the rights, recognize that there are rights, prohibition against discrimination against homosexuals and transgender individuals. I believe that's the recognition that needs to be made. Now, how you go about doing it, I mean, that's obviously a matter of management, which I'm not qualified to opine on. I'm just telling you what I think the law, what the law, the weight of the authority is now and what it's going to be in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
I have three questions that relate to what you answered in these.
I'll turn it on. Your honor.
The first one has to do with, it's question six from the question-answer sheets, board members. It was the one dated April 25th.
And I just want to say for the record that that was a draft, which I sent out and, so the spellings, please blame someone other than me. Thank you.
I just wanted you to further clarify for me here. The question was, it had to do with the court opinions. And basically, the question six said, as for final clarification, because the rulings were not in our district or our circuit, it says the ruling has little or no impact on this district or whatever. It talked about, correct, and you went into technically, the middle district of Florida is not within the Fourth Circuit, does not set law, but that it was very significant. Could you elaborate about, even though it's not our circuit or district, it's still significant? Could you explain that a little bit more to me and to this room?
Sure. This is the G.G. v. Gloucester School Board case. The lower court opinion was that, it was a, it was a, the lower court opinion was that restrooms were not, the school board did not have to accommodate transgender students with regard to restrooms. The Fourth Circuit, in a 2-1 decision, reversed, and as the questions reflect, remanded for further consideration, but essentially directed or found that the OCR's opinion of Title IX with regard to restroom usage was, should be adopted as the law, which is the restroom with which he or she identifies. Now, a decision in the Fourth Circuit does not control the courts in the 11th Circuit, which is where we are. However, the language, the way lawyers refer to it is, decisions of appellate courts from other circuits are persuasive authority on the courts of any other circuit. And we're talking about federal courts here. So if I'm a district, sitting, United States District Judge, and I'm faced with the same issue as presented in the G.G. versus Gloucester case, I don't have to follow that case. But I can assure you that the 11th Circuit, my, the boss of that district judge, is going to expect me to explain why I didn't. Respect and deference is to be accorded. Now, I personally think there are many reasons one could not follow the G.G. decision, but they would have to be explained and supported, and it's not something that can simply be ignored. Now, let's say it was an 11th Circuit decision, district court in Florida would simply cite that case, it could be one line, and move on, wouldn't have to explain it, the authority is there. But it's not there yet. So that's, that's what I was talking about, in terms of persuasive but not controlling authority.
Go ahead.
My second question had to do, I'm gonna go to the other question and answer sheet, board members, it's dated April 18th. And this is in reference to eight and nine. And it kind of reminds me of what students would do on a test where it says, see answer, see answer to number eight, and then I look at answer eight, and it didn't really answer my question, so sorry. The two questions were, would we be subject to legal liabilities if we did not incorporate the terms of sexual orientation or gender identity in our discrimination policy? And then your answer was, no, the absence or presence of policy language does not alter or create legal standards. And then the next question was, would we be subject if we incorporate the terms in our, and it says, see answer number eight. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Policies don't create law. School board policies don't create law. School board policies don't overrule law either. I mean, you, if you have a policy which says it's okay to discriminate against homosexuals, until you discriminate against homosexuals, it really doesn't matter, you know, from a purely legal standpoint. It's the act of discrimination, not the language you use in your policy that matters the most. Now, Mark has mentioned, and I know Harold has mentioned, situations on which there's review by Departments of Education and things of that nature. Again, I focus narrowly on litigation. To be sued, you have to, you have to engage in adverse action. Saying you're going to do it is one thing, but actually doing it is what matters. So the language of the policy doesn't control whether you're going to be liable or not. It's what you do that controls your liability. Again, in terms of civil rights litigation and the federal court system. Did I get it? Or am I still not? You just don't have, your policy language doesn't matter in terms of liability. Your policy language matters in terms of guidance to your staff. If you say, it's, if you say it's okay to discriminate against transgender individuals and your staff does, then you're gonna get sued, and then we're gonna have a problem.
I think the community felt by adding the words, then it would allow, what am I looking at here? Do you know what I'm trying to say there? Okay, well, let me skip that one for now. The last question that really blew me away here, that I still can't wrap my brain around, and maybe it's just because I didn't get two cups of coffee this morning, is, under April 11th, 2016, question number one. It's, it's on the last page of this group. It said, "What about the rights of all other students who may feel uncomfortable in the restroom with a transgender student?" And you wrote, "It is my understanding that the policy recommendation does not involve mandatory shared bathrooms slash locker rooms. However, if and when the law does require same, other students who are uncomfortable in the restroom will have no recourse. The law will view the situation no differently than it did 60 years ago when white students were required to share locker rooms with African-Americans."
I, that's absolutely what I believe the law to be. If the law changes, and that's the hinge here, if the courts say that transgender individuals are allowed to share locker rooms and bathrooms with, you know, without restriction, then that's going to be the law. The fact that one person is uncomfortable isn't going to change the law. You either have the right or you don't have the right. I mean, now, understand, I don't think the law is going to change with regard to locker rooms, frankly. I think, I think there's a big difference.
But I can't wrap my, you know, and, I just can't wrap my, so, I just, so you're telling me that skin color is gonna be treated the same, I mean, and I understand the whole thing from 60 years ago, than having a male and female showering in an open locker room together?
I, I.
Because that's what I read this as, and I'm trying to wrap my head around.
You need to understand, my position is, if that is the law, I'm not saying it is the law, but if that is the law, that's going to be the way it is. I mean, the courts set the law. I mean, I imagine people were, you know, many years ago, people were upset about various things. I mean, the idea of.
Please, no comments from the crowd.
Yeah, the law changes and people adapt. But am I saying that's the law? No, I'm not saying that's the law.
It's stating, stating fact that if they set that, then unfortunately we all have to live by it.
Right.
Without any other qualifications. Again, you're doing a what-if. Don't know what-if it. You can't what-if it. You have, you're not a legal mind, neither am I, none of us are.
But do you understand how ludicrous, I mean, I'm just.
Well, no, because you're what-if-ing a situation. So this is, we don't know what the law would even say, so don't try and, what I'm saying is, you know, you're trying to, I think, read more into it. He's given the, he's correct, you know, if, without anything else being said, without any other restrictions being put on, you know, the question was, what about uncomfortable? We don't know what the law would actually say, right? So he's just saying that if the law, the way you asked, whoever asked that question, was exactly that, then yes, that would be, but we don't know that, so don't, that has no relevance to what we're discussing.
Correct.
How can it not have relevance, though, Mr. Craig? Because we just had a court case this week where, in what state, that said students are allowed to use the restroom of their gender preference and locker room, so how is it not relevant?
Well, for what it's worth, the case was restricted to restrooms.
Exactly, it was not locker room.
And I'll be perfectly frank with you, I have some problems with the G.G. Gloucester decision. I think it's a reach, I think their interpretation of the regulation as being ambiguous is very difficult for me to understand since Title IX allows, by its regulation, for separate locker rooms and bathrooms. I don't know how language could be any less ambiguous, but the Fourth Circuit found otherwise. Now, that's gonna be something other courts are going to interpret. And I frankly don't know, and I have a very difficult time imagining a situation where locker rooms would ever fall into the same rationale. I just don't see that happening. I don't know how, and my problem with the Fourth Circuit's decision is, how do you make the distinction between a bathroom, which may be a more private setting, and a shower, you know, with 50 students? It's the same regulations, and I have some real intellectual problems with the case. It's not our law yet.
Restroom discussion to me is totally different, and the employees and all of that. I just, when I got to this question and I saw your answer, I just, my brain started exploding at that point in time.
I apologize, it's the lawyer's sort of, it is what it is, response. Again, it's one of those things where I, I don't think about my own opinion because it really doesn't matter. I certainly understand why you would think, you know, as a reasonable person.
Mrs. Belfort had a question.
More specifically, I guess, a comment on that line of discussion. And I think that what that line of discussion highlights is that what we do on a day-to-day basis in the district and what our policy says are completely separate from law. Because regardless of what decisions are made by law, we have to work within those expectations to do what's best for our students on a daily basis. And so for us to look at our crystal ball and say what the law is going to be tomorrow, I think is dangerous. I think what we have to do is look at what is in front of us today and see how we make the best decisions for our employees, for our students, for our communities today, and know that the wording of our policy doesn't guide that, it doesn't set law, it doesn't make us open to legal issue. So we're going to have to be fluid and flexible as we move forward and the law changes as to our administrative procedures. But our policy is separate from that and a guiding beacon for our district, I guess you could say, as to what we feel is important, what we should support. But I think it is something that we all need to realize, that regardless of what decision is made here today, this isn't going to be the end of the conversation, because there are going to be laws, there are going to be cases that are gonna be heard that are going to change, just like we get constant changes from Florida statute every year, the 536 different statutes that come through.
All on education, that's right. Yes.
Mrs. Henderson?
Number 17 was, do you recommend adoption of formal administrative procedures, blah, 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 blah? And then you said you recommend a consistent policy. If our policy is where, if our policy, you said we don't have to change it, if we have a consistent administrative procedure, because many of our policies are up here, and we hone in on details specifically within each of our organizations, and that's what our administrative procedures are for, to say, how do you implement this in your school, in your classroom, et cetera?
Yeah, again, my concern as the litigation lawyer is being sued. So it's what you do in the end that makes the difference. So if that can be done through administrative procedures, I understand policies are guidelines and administrative procedures are the how-to. Again, my biggest concern is inconsistent results throughout the district and what seems to be, on the weight of the present authority, the likelihood that the courts are going to provide protection to transgender students under Title IX, and at least right now, maybe in bathrooms, but maybe not. So what is important to me is that there be no, that there be as little discrimination as humanly possible in the, with regard to transgender and sexual preference. Because I think the. Because I think those things are going to become protected. And it's not like if you violate, it's not, there used to be something called a one-bite rule, you know? Dog bit you once, it was okay. Bit you twice, there's no one-bite rule. If you violate, that's students' rights, and it's the first time the case is decided, you don't get a mulligan. You still lose. So, and that's why I'm here trying to make suggestions. But again, we are working, you know, without a net. I mean, we're trying to guess what the future's going to be.
Mrs. Neese.
You know, Neola has recommended the changes for a while. And we pay a lot of money for Neola. And I like the changes they've recommended in the policies that Mark pointed out at the beginning. And so, I think, you know, putting in parentheses what the definition of sex recommends, I think that's a good place to start. That way, it also shows up on our website. It also shows up on the handbook in the discrimination section. You know, I think that's a good place to start. That way, we also have the backup in what I call the insurance part of that, in case we have to pay Mike down the road under litigation. I think that's a very good place to start. We also have heard a consistent message from staff and from students that they need some guidance. And so, I think we start with the policy part there and we, you know, dig into the procedures. You know, I know I kind of went off on a tangent with my head exploding when I looked at your answers there, you know? Sorry, Mike. You did make my head explode there a little bit, because I do think the courts and the feds are nuts. But I've said that for 12 years, so I'm not going to change my stance there. But we need to address what our students and our staff are saying here, and they're saying they need guidance. So, we are, so our role as board members is first and foremost to set policy. And that is our role. And I think we start with the pinnacle of our role, which is policy, and start with that, and go with what's recommended, and then go down from there. So, that's what I would support.
I'm going to jump in, since I haven't made any comments yet to Mike's, and then we'll get, I'll come right back to you, Mrs. Henderson. Mrs. Neese, you mentioned, reviewed question eight and nine, whether we do something with their liability. If we don't do something, is there a liability? I think that sometimes that's like the elephant in the room, because I've heard from both sides, no matter what we do, we're going to have issues. So, I think the real question is, is what is the, from our perspective, what is the safest direction to go, or the safest thing to do for both protecting the district and protecting, of course, protecting students at the same time? We, well, as Ms. Neese and Ms. Belfort talked about, Neola, following their lead and also the liability that is reduced and the support we get from Neola if we go that route. Legal counsel, it sounds to me like you're saying that consistency is very helpful and that we should stick to that to minimize, because again, either way, something may happen. And then, very astutely put, administrative procedure, consistency on that, which is going to be part of our strategic plan, because we found inconsistencies in discipline and other things, so we do need to be consistent across the district. But let me clarify, if we do the policy change for that consistency, which provides us some protection, minimizes liability in a particular area, but we don't, but we're not consistent, as Mrs. Henderson said, about our implementation, that weakens our position of policy. Is that correct?
It's always been my position that the worst policy is one that's not enforced. If you're not going to enforce it, don't have it. I mean, I've actually recommended to employers, don't have a policy manual. You're not going to obey it, right? If, don't pass a policy that you're not serious about. Don't pass a policy that's not going to be enforced consistently, because it's just going to cause more problems than it helps.
So, all good points and all a concern, but of course, we want that consistency. So, I agree that we need to strongly consider the suggestions of Neola, our legal staff, and our staff who's bringing this to us, so that we're consistent across the board. Mrs. Henderson.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I think that what I heard Dr. Thetty and Ms. Knight say about what our staff was saying was that we didn't need the policy change. What they needed was guidance. Guidance comes not from a policy, but it comes from the procedures on how they're going to handle it. And I think to make the changes after, we heard what the principals have to say, we are hearing what the students have to say, and this is not what they're saying they want, nor they need. Not only that, quite frankly, basically what we've heard here is, no matter what you do, it's a crapshoot. Pardon me.
You went to law school, too, huh?
I mean, and we know from being on here for a long time that it doesn't matter what decision you make, it will always be wrong. So, I'm concerned that we are not listening to what our staff and our students are saying, if you go down that route. I'm also concerned about what it looks like in our schools, which is one of the reasons we needed to talk about it again anyway publicly, because our parents need to know exactly what it looks like in our schools, bathrooms, lockers, whatever. The other thing is, you want to say you want to change policy, but again, we haven't spoken specifically to what policy. Are we talking about employment, or are we talking about students? So, I don't even have particular clarity on what you said. But I think that as a board, we need to think about what our principals have been telling us, and I'm sure you've all gone out and talked to your principals and gotten input from them, listen to what the students have to say. I am all in favor of making changes to make sure that we don't discriminate against anyone. Can I ask you just another question?
Sure.
Does the word "every" mean "every," or do I need to put a parentheses in there?
You're talking management decisions here.
And our teachers, our principals and teachers are telling us that "all" means "all." And I think that we should listen to them. I think that they're the ones closest to this issue. Our, I believe with all my heart, that all of our principals and all of our teachers want to do right by all students. Period. End of subject. I'm done.
We need some additional input for guidance here. I personally think that we've followed Neola's recommendation, I think 99.99% of the time. They've been suggesting that this for a while, and unfortunately, that got blocked from our purview years ago. And I believe that that language is being recommended and should be brought forth for consideration. I think Mrs. Neese stated the same thing. I guess we need input from Mrs. Belfort and Mr. Craig as to know whether we have a consensus in one direction or another.
Thank you for everyone's input and discussion today. Basically, I break it down to taking the emotion out of it. To me, you have to look at it from a practical and legal standpoint. I have not been convinced that from a legal standpoint, that changing and putting in parentheticals is going to do anything or make us any better. It is procedural that we need to change. And that means that we need to go through our entire, entire procedures throughout this district and how we handle everything, to make sure that those words and that those, that every person is recognized and is treated the exact same way. Changing forwards in the policy does not change procedure. I stated it before, this district isn't mature enough to lay forwards on top of a policy that isn't being, that isn't being appropriately addressed already by our own admission, right? We are not at the level where we are applying consistent procedures and consistent recognition and handling of individual cases, both from students and employees. We are not doing that yet. So, to lay policy on top of it to make it even harder is not where we need to go. We need to make sure that our procedures are representative of exactly what our students and our staff that are on the front line are asking for, the guidance that is required for them to have the best toolset to do their jobs on a daily basis. Now, many of you asked why, or probably were questioning why I brought up dyslexia. It all goes back to definition, right? We follow the definitions. We have a nondiscrimination policy that is exactly reflective of what the state says, exactly word-for-word. And we apply the definitions as required, both from the federal level, as Mr. Langendorf said, and the state level. And if there is a difference between the two, then the state takes priority, because education is a state responsibility, not a federal responsibility. It is, I'm sorry, it's not in the Constitution. It is not. Education is not in the federal Constitution. It is relegated to the states, and even in that decision that was based, that was given out last week, it specifically said that it is a state decision. So, it is, and there was deference to that in that opinion. So, the reason I bring up, or I added dyslexia in there is because we don't have parentheticals for other things, like disabilities. All of us would disagree, or all of us would probably agree, hopefully, that if you are suffering from dyslexia, that that is a disability that affects your ability to learn. The state of Florida does not recognize it as a disability, yet we still address it through our procedures, not by policy, but by procedures, because we take care of every student. Now, we may not be doing it the best way, as Ms. Baberski referenced, and we're continuing to try and elevate that, because that is what's right to do for the student. We want to make sure that we address every single student, whatever their disability may be, or whatever their other issue may be, whatever definition that may be in a parenthetical beyond any one of the things that is currently in our discrimination policy. So, until we have those procedures in place, I'm not in favor of adding those forwards.
Mrs. Belfort? I'm confused.
I offer a bit of a different perspective than what was mentioned. The statement was made that guidance comes not from our policy, but from the procedures that are in place. And I really feel like the overarching guidance comes from our policy, the message, the core focus comes from the policy. I think that the procedures are equally important in what we do. Some might even say more important. I think in the day-to-day operation, those procedures become significant. But as far as sending the message of this board's expectation of our team, our employees, our principals, our students, our everyone, I think that that guidance comes from the policy. And then the specifics of how we carry that forward comes from the procedures that we put forth. I feel like we absolutely need to discuss those procedures, because there are a lot of concerns that have been brought up, that I feel like today, until law changes, can be addressed through procedure, to make everyone more comfortable. And there were a lot of questions that Mr. Bowling responded to that the public hasn't seen. I feel like angst around changing this policy comes from completely different perspectives that we haven't taken the time to sit down and discuss. For example, one of the questions about the bathrooms. How do we handle bathrooms? We handle them right now pretty effectively. Does this policy change the way that we handle bathrooms? No, it doesn't, which is one of the responses that Mr. Bowling put forth, is it doesn't change that simply by adopting the policy. Do we need clarification? Probably, to alleviate the angst that's associated with that issue. There have been lots of questions about religious freedoms being violated. Religious freedoms are protected in the policy as well. So, does us adopting this policy infringe on religious freedoms? Mr. Bowling's response was, unless you can give me a specific situation, I don't believe So, I think in order for us to move forward, we all have to come to the same understanding of, A, what the policy does, and B, how we implement that policy with fidelity to ensure that we are doing what's right for our team today. In looking at other school districts, and we have some samples in here, I will tell you, there are 14 school districts in the state of Florida that already adopted inclusive policies, and reaching out and speaking to them and asking them, have they caused problems? Has it, do you have people behaving defiantly and/or deviantly and putting people at risk? And it just doesn't happen. And I have to believe that there's a way that we can voice our expectation that all children, all employees are treated fairly, and implement procedures that support everyone's well-being. And so, my request, I guess, moving forward, is that we invest the time to do that, to look at, what is it that we are doing currently as far as administrative procedures? Are there things that need to be changed going forward as far as administrative procedures? And if so, then by all means, let's make sure that we change them. I didn't hear from our, our voice of our principals or our teachers that they didn't want a policy change. What I heard was, they needed clarity on what the impact of that policy change is. And I think we have to give that to them, because I think that's where the angst comes from, in us not being frank about things, not being, you know, frank about the expectations and how do we handle the various situations, and our, how do we handle overnight trips? How do we handle these things? And so, maybe it's time that we have that conversation and be very open, and assure everyone that, as we heard earlier, us adopting a policy doesn't change our legal liability, doesn't change what we do on a day-to-day basis. It's that procedure that we put into place that's going to change that. But I do believe that the policy provides that guidance, that expectation. So, when people look at it, they go, this is an issue that I have to be aware of.
Mr. Craig, just for clarification, because I do agree, policy is the oversight of creating procedure. But to clarify, because when I came here, I honestly, I wasn't set that policy was the solution to supporting children. And that's why I made the comment earlier about you have the legal issue, and then you have the support of children issue, and how do we accomplish the two? And procedure could be one way in. But to clarify your position, which I don't, I agree, policy comes first, it sounds like you're not opposed to considering a policy change, but you're more concerned about a procedural implementation? Because that, to me, is very, was where I was going to go with the support of children. How do we, how do we make sure that that happens? But then hearing Neola and legal staff, and what's, that's the legal side of this. So, unless you're going to have one decision on all of it, which I don't think, I think there are two paths to go down, the legal path and the procedural support path, you're not opposed to a policy change. You just want, is that correct? You just want to understand procedure?
Well, I, I believe, through Mr. Langendorf's responses of where he gets his definitions for every other, every term that's in our discrimination policy, that we already have a policy that protects exactly against what we're going to add or suggesting to add in a parenthetical. He already says that that's where he goes for his definition, right? What is not being done is that that, then, is not being translated to out throughout the district, is what I see. So, that is a procedural issue.
Sure.
So, you know, adding the language, it does nothing, because we already have, we already have that. That is, that is the expectation that risk management, that Mr. Langendorf has set out. He specifically cited the EEOC definition as what he uses as a litmus test for what the definition of sex is. That's fine. Then that needs to be threaded throughout our procedures throughout the district. Changing the language is not going to, we already have the policy that sets the expectation. We already have it. We have the definition. We have the definition, we have the policy that references that definition, now we have to have the procedures that back it up.
Agreed. However, it sounds that we will heighten our, or we will minimize our liability if we have a legal perspective.
That is not what Mr. Bowling said. What Mr. Bowling specifically said, and that's why I said he contradicted himself, was that the policy does not create law, the language does not control, it's the action. It's the action. It is, people are going to sue no matter what. If we break the policy right now, they're still going to sue. And well, they should, because we have an expectation of what the definition of sex is.
I, that's a good point. The financial is a good point. I personally, from what I've heard from staff and council, is, I personally support the policy change, but agree that we need to work on the consistency of the procedures and the implementations for the benefit of students and for employees. So I guess the question is, is what is, there seems to be an unclear consensus here as to what we do with policy. I'm pretty clear that we need to go down that road.
Did I mischaracterize the principals? They want the policy change? Or they don't want the policy change? I mean, I made the statement that what they wanted was more direction.
Excuse me, I understood both from the principals. They feel like we have policy in place in our anti-harassment and our anti-bullying policies that are applicable to all students regardless of gender, identity, or sexual orientation. And so they felt, for the majority of them in that respect, if we have those policies in place for all students, we should be enforcing those policies that we already have. You know, we have principals and teachers, just like community members, they're a microcosm of our community, they align on both sides of the issue. But what the overwhelming theme that I got from our principals, and that the principals relayed to me from the teachers, was that they did want guidance on how to work with students, specifically students in the LGBT community, so that they can meet the needs of those students in addition to all other students, with guidance or with policy or not, they want that.
Okay. And we just heard that pretty much doesn't matter if we change the policy or not, and our teachers, our principals, want the administrative procedures. Dr. Blackburn, you have any input on this?
I do. Would you like me to provide input now, or at the end of a board discussion?
You're welcome to chime in now.
Where do I start? I'll tell you, I'll give a few things that most of the listening audience already knows, right? A few bullet points from my resume. I'm in my 20th year of my chosen profession, which is education. Fifteen or sixteen of those years have been in positions of leadership, administration. I have a master's degree in ed leadership, a doctorate in ed leadership. I've probably read hundreds of articles and books on educational leadership, and I've actually taught masters and doctoral classes for the last 10 years. All of that said, my best training for this position came from three and a half years I spent as a basketball referee. And why is that? Because of the advice I was given before I went into my first game. And my mentor referee shared with me that, I'm going to make some good calls, I'm going to make some bad calls, but each and every one of your calls will be seen as wrong by one of those two teams out there, right? All of the calls. Every once in a while, you'll make some good, you'll make some bad. Every once in a while, you're going to make a phenomenal call. That call is probably going to upset both teams, the phenomenal call. So when it comes to this issue, I've had the good fortune of speaking with, talking to, and hearing from everyone on the spectrum of thought, from both extremes and people in the middle. And we have an extreme that suggests, change this policy now, do it, period. And we have the other extreme that says, do not change it ever to be more inclusive. As a matter of fact, take back some of the practices and policies you already have in place. I've heard both, okay? My thought is that, on the far extreme that suggests, we must change the policy tomorrow, we must, we must, we must. By nature of my race, my religion, my color, my gender, my age, and my marital status, I am protected multiple times within our current discrimination language. However, I don't lean on language, I lean on hearts and minds of actual people as I'm interacting with. But I do see the benefit of that language. Language started, I'm not a historian, and I'm not an attorney, but language started a few hundred years ago with all men being created equal. At various times in our history, people decided that in addition to all men, we need to add race, religion, color, national origin, gender, age, disability, marital status. For a variety of reasons, it was determined that those pieces of language would be added. I think, and Boy Scouts are also added, right? I think all of those words were added for the same reason we now have life vests on cruise ships. Stuff happened that we weren't prepared for, right? I hear the legal advice that we are being given, and I resonate with the legal advice, because while I'm not an attorney and I'm a superintendent, we come from the same place. All I can do is use my best understanding of what happens, my training, and what I think is coming down the pike, to make a recommendation to the people who've hired me. That's the best I can do. I also see this as much more than a legal issue, simply because, and it's been stated here several times, that we are no more protected or made vulnerable by inclusion or absence of language. Right now, if we discriminate, an act of discrimination happens today, we'll be sued, rightfully so. Now, that's one side of the coin. Add the language so we are more protected. The other side of the coin is, don't add the language, because, and I'm just going to repeat some of the most extreme thoughts that have been shared with me. Approving this language opens up the floodgate, and you're going to start teaching curriculum, and I'm going to have a 55-year-old man in the restroom with a three-year-old girl, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is not the case either. This does not even speak to what has created the most angst, and that is the locker room, the bathroom, et cetera, et cetera, okay? Doesn't even speak to that. From a social perspective, one of the things that I've heard a great deal since being in Brevard, July 20, 2015, and that is, not only do residents of Brevard want to bring back some of the population that's left, but we want to continue to retain the population we have. There is an awesome effort out there right now to attract businesses to Brevard County from around the professional spectrum. When I hear that, my heart and my mind tells me that I have to do everything in my power to make sure all individuals are socially feeling that Brevard County is the place to work, learn, live, play, right? And so from a social perspective and professional perspective, I want to do everything in my power to make sure that that happens. The thought that a little extra for one portion of our community is to the detriment of another portion of the community, I tend to disagree with. You know, I was home this weekend looking at my lawn, and I care about my lawn a great deal. I care about each and every blade of my grass. And I equally water my grass, and I equally spread fertilizer over my grass. I even equally cut my grass. Slight lie, the lawn service cuts my grass. But I say all that to say, I have a little patch in the corner that's speaking to me right now more than the rest of my grass. And it's saying, I'm a little dry over here, and I'm a little brown, where everyone else is really, really green. While you've done everything equally for all the other blades of grass, I'm asking you to do something a little extra for this little patch. And so I did. Went out to Home Depot, and I said, hey, I have a little patch, what do you recommend? He asked me about the blades of the grass, am I seeing white spots, or am I seeing tears? I said, I'm seeing tears. He said, you probably have some bugs eating around that. He gave me some solution, right? And so that's not a detriment to the rest of the lawn, it is to make sure the entire lawn looks and feels beautiful. So my job isn't necessarily to, I mean, my job is to take board direction, and that board direction is given to me via policy and then executed with administrative procedures. But I do believe I'm expected to make recommendations to the board, and unequivocally, my recommendation is that we amend the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Craig.
The only thing I'll add, and this is just playing devil's advocate, Doctor, is that the grass example, while great, is procedure. What you just described is changing the procedure, not the overall arching policy of how you're addressing the entire lawn, so.
I am both the homeowner and I am the home maintenance person. So I run policy and procedure in my home. Here, I only run procedure.
Got it.
A little different in my house, my wife sets policy and I implement procedure. I should have said that, you're exactly right.
I asked my wife not to listen today, Mr. Ziegler.
Can we take a, yeah, we've got a request for a break, so we're going to. I don't think we've completed yet, so let's just take a quick five minutes, so Mrs. Belfort doesn't slap me up here. We'll take a five-minute recess.
We'll resume in 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2.
Okay, we are back to complete this workshop. I'd like to know if any board members have any more input, comments, questions on any aspect of the workshop from any of our presenters. At this point, we need to give direction to staff. As I see it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears there's consensus on moving forward with a policy change to be as recommended, and there's justly concern about procedures and implementation, which also needs to be brought forward as to how we're going to apply those evenly and consistently across the district. So that being said, I believe that would be the direction, Dr. Blackburn, is that the policy comes back, but that also the concerns about procedures, consistency across the district. What is not clear, which it was not yet going to be clear, but is again, the messages to students that make them feel comfortable, that the adults in the room are there to support them. And I understand there's probably a lot of different ways to do that, maybe some more input from student voice would be great, as to how they feel they would receive that message, whether it be from us, whether it be in writing from policy, whether it be student handbook, whether it be student support groups, whether we engage some of the outside community groups in that conversation. It could be all of the above. Again, not my expertise, and I'm not sure if it's any of our expertise, but that is also just as important. Mrs. Henderson?
Which policy are you changing?
Though I would, we can clarify. The policies, I believe, as Mr. Langendorf said, need to have consistency, and so the ones that he believed need to be uniformly modified and brought forward, that would be staff recommendation. And I believe Neola has that consistency. I am a little bit confused as to the anti-bullying harassment one not having those changes in that, so if you feel that is correct, okay. If not, then I would, I guess we would want to know when you come forward if that one doesn't change, because I'm not perfectly clear on the logic on that one.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm understanding, so I bring this back correctly. Okay, how's that?
There you go.
I want to make sure I'm getting the direction correctly. Obviously, Dick DeGroot has got six or seven policies in here with that language included. I will bring that back to you the way DeGroot has recommended it, or, I'm sorry.
Neola.
I keep saying DeGroot, because I have a vendor that used, his last name is DeGroot, which I'm, anyway, I will bring back Dick Clapp's recommendations from Neola on all of those particular policies. I will then compare our existing policies to see what needs to be changed, and if anything is contrary in those policies, I will present those to you as well, and then you can tell us or give us direction on all those policies. We do have other policies that may include areas where I think we need to consider adding that existing language. We may not have a policy recommendation from Neola on those, but I will bring those back too, if you want me to add that language. In addition to that, on our webpage, our nondiscrim policy, that technically has never gone to the board in the past when adding that language, do you want me to bring that back to you as a board decision on changing that language for our books and our webpage? That's the only question I have.
I would assume so, because then that's consistency. And I believe that policy over being the guiding light to procedure, that everything then should flow accordingly. Is that correct? That makes sense to me.
I think that if the policy changes, then those other things should be consistent with the policy.
Right.
I'm not sure you have to actually vote on all that, but it doesn't matter.
And from Mrs. Neese.
Mark, is there, can there be any consolidation? We had talked at one point of consolidating, because we've done a lot of policies where in the employee sections and so forth where you've consolidated. Is there any consolidation that you can do on any of these, or have you consolidated to the extent that you can?
In the attempt that I made back in January with Harold Weisler and Mike Boeing's help, I tried to consolidate it into 3362. The problem is, the way our policies are written from Neola, they have the same language in many, many policies. So I don't know if there's a way to do that without addressing that in all of those policies, without throwing some of policies, without throwing some of those things out of those policies, which, which could create a problem which Ms. Belford talked about, because, you know, you, we, they give us policy recommendation that, that is enforceable. If we make changes to that or substantial changes, we don't get the kind of backing from a legal perspective that Neola is offering to us.
I, I would suggest, I made this comment a long time ago, that while the consistency, I would think, is important, the number of policies or how it's broken up, I don't consider a concern. What I've always considered a concern is when we make policies so complicated that staff can't follow policy. So if having too many policies becomes complicated or contradictory, that's a concern. Otherwise, I don't have an issue with the multiple policies. Mrs. Henderson.
This is, could you tell, are we doing the anti-discrimination and the bullying and harassment, or just anti-discrimination?
All the applicable policies that need to be consistent.
And then, Mr. Bullying, why don't you tell us all the difference between anti-discrimination and bullying and harassment?
Well.
Please.
Bullying is a recent legal concept. It really didn't exist 15 years ago in terms of litig, in terms of litigation, it really didn't exist 15 years ago. As of right now, my involvement in bullying is limited because the Florida statute, which provides, and I've lost the name, which provides the provision, which requires school boards to have bullying policies, has not created a cause of action. You can't get sued under it. And if you can't get sued under it, it doesn't really involve me that much. Bullying, as I understand it, is defined as repeated behaviors. Well, discrimination can be a single event. Harassment, it can be a single event, though it is often a continuous process. But one can be bullied and that, and not violate Title IX, one can be bullied and violate Title IX. It depends on the motivation for the bullying. But I think in terms of harassment as the, as the concept, because bullying would be a subset of har, of harassment from a legal standpoint anyhow.
Could you please explain to us specifically how students can discriminate?
Well, student-on-student discrimination under Title IX is, you can sue the school board for student-on-student discrimination under Title IX for harassment. That is a constant process by which a student is taunted typically, you know, picked on as a result of some characteristic, generally sex-based. And that can rise to the level of, of har, of discrimination, of harassment. Harassment is a subset of discrimination. Did I get, did I get?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Mrs. Neese.
Whether it's Dr. Thetty or Dr. Blackburn, what would be the timeline that these would come forward in terms of board meetings, so our public would know?
I'm glad you asked that question, because, you know, timing is an issue. I made notes here. There, there are questions around consolidation, and I heard, you know, a comment that we really need most all, if not, you know, not less, but I would still like an opportunity to examine that with staff. There's also a concern around amending a policy and then not having the subsequent procedures that would support that policy. And so while receiving the, the direction by consensus, I would like to go back and work with staff and, and create a timetable for the board and then bring that to you. Or, I guess I'm asking for a little bit of discretion around timing, but I do understand the sensitivity here, and I would bring back a timetable to the board if that pleases the board.
Mrs. Belford.
Would it be appropriate and/or helpful for us to give additional input as to the considerations we would like included in those procedural guidelines? Do you all want to know, I mean, specifically the issues that are of biggest concern and the things that you should probably be targeting, is that, I mean?
Yes, ma'am, and we can do that here in this setting, or we can arrange, you know, additional opportunity for the board to do that.
Is that, is that not part of the strategic planning process?
So, yeah, you know, we're, we're back to this place where we are, we're flying the plane as we're trying to enhance the plane as well, right? So as far as procedure is concerned, there is the, the teacher tomorrow, the principal tomorrow, and, and the staff did a great job in talking about how we'll continue to grow and enhance what we're already doing, right? And so, and then there is the policy that we want to bring back and whatever changes to procedures need to be made to make that more palatable, right? So there are multiple things going on at the same time. I'm not sure, I actually answered your question, but I'm going to, you know...
Well, I guess we have a timeline for our strategic planning process, which this includes, because it includes many of the procedures already that we were talking about in the socio-emotional specific. So I guess the question is, are you, are you elevating then? Are you changing that timeline to address something faster? Or, or are we still proceeding with the same timeline to make sure that it is, that it is applicable and, because there's interactions between all the different objectives? So I, I want to make sure we're not just pushing something ahead because it's, it's right in front, that it's, that it is consistent with your strategic planning process.
Great question. So that timeline, and I don't want to speak directly for staff, but we're looking at plans or fixes or changes to be solidified by January, February of the 16, 17 school year, giving the board enough time to evaluate our suggestions, have all the necessary public input, perhaps even pilot or test some of our, some of our plans and fixes as well. So without looking specifically at this one, I would say worst-case scenario is the mid-year point of next year, looking at specifics. Worst-case scenario, things could, individual pieces of the entire strategic plan could happen earlier than we planned. But within all of our work, we are, you know, building a cushion around time expectations.
Wasn't there, and I'm not sure if it's in the objectives, but wasn't there, didn't you talk about a plan at one point to how the district would change and, and modify or create new policies? Is that a part of this plan? I read that somewhere.
You did. Yes, we have discussed, you know, solidifying what leads to policy changes and how we go about doing that. I do believe, Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually, do we have currently a policy on how we change our policies?
It's not necessarily a policy, but it's a practice. And the practice is basically, when we, whenever we need to make a policy, whenever we receive direction from the board or receive that direction from Neola, we then, as a staff, will take that information, look at our existing policy, make changes to that, and present it back to the board in, in basically three forms. We'll list the policy just as it currently is. When we add something, we will take in red and underline it. If it's something that we're going to strike, we will strike it out. And so you'll see the strike, the adding and striking of particular words within that policy. And then you'll see it without anything, just the way we're wanting to present it. That's our policy on bringing a policy, our practice on bringing a policy back. What we also do is we, when it's submitted to you, we will outline on a sheet of paper exactly what part of that policy is going to change, and, and the reason for it, if it's recommended by the board. As far as procedures are concerned, we don't have a particular process, other than we can certainly bring our processes, our procedures back to you for a vote, and at times, the board has approved procedures. Most of the time, they are not presented to the board, as the superintendent can change those whenever he directs them to be changed, because we follow his procedures. You guys set the policy. And that's basically how it happens with regards to policy versus procedure. I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Ziegler and members of the board, would it, would it please the board if no later than, not tonight's board meeting, but the 5:10 board meeting? Staff and I presented you with the timetable and rationale with that timetable. Would that be pleasing to the board?
Yes, I first want to clarify on policy, because it's really never been clearly defined from the board perspective, but in, in my opinion, I think the board would agree, that since the board sets policy, I believe any board member who has a concern about policy can, can get with staff, get with the superintendent, and address a policy to bring to the board. I believe every board member has the right to do that. So I don't particularly think we need a policy on policies, because typically, those things evolve as we stub our toes on things. We say, well, we need a policy to make sure that doesn't happen again. I don't think we have a problem here. So I don't think we need a policy on that. As far as the timeline is concerned, and while considering the strategic plan, which does address the consistency of implementation of procedures, the strategic plan, in my belief, doesn't specify the detail within it. It says, we're going to come up with consistent procedures. The strategic plan itself doesn't say what the procedures are going to be. So in the, because this is a now, a current topic, I don't believe we should delay that that we know we're going to do. I think those procedures should come forward in a more timely manner than, than tying them to the strategic plan, which might have evolved this year from now. I, I don't want to see a long delay. I'd like to hear what the board feels about that.
Mr. Ziegler, can I say one other thing, because I forgot to say this, and I apologize? When it comes to policy itself, after we put it on those documents, made those changes, we bring it back to the board twice. Once for information, the next for action, and that action is to place it as a public hearing. Okay? That, between the action item and it coming back as a public hearing, we must wait 28 days by law. And so this is, this is one of those processes where it could take three, possibly, you know, four months to go through that process. But that's basically how, how your board policies are put into place.
Mrs. Neese.
It seems, it seems apparent to me at our workshop today that we have three board members that are ready to go forward on policies and two that do not want policy changes. I would like to see at the May 10 meeting, what to go forward with the policies that we need to move forward with changes. It's going to be a two-to-three month process. I would like to be, I would like the first step to be on the agenda at the May meeting. I don't want this to be delayed. I'd like this to be completed before I go off the board and not be a year-long process. We've been at this for over a year.
Correct.
I want, I want the process started, move on to other items. So if we have a majority that can give the superintendent direction today, let's stop dragging this out and move forward.
I, I agree. And as far as procedures, I think that could be worked on simultaneously to come, to come just, that may take longer, but they could be developed simultaneously, unless board members have an objection to that.
Well, no, it's not an objection, but your personal, I'm sorry, Ms. Neese, but your personal timeline and agenda does not drive good policymaking. And, you know, if we're going to have a policy, then it needs to follow the correct procedures and the correct way to get there, not be accelerated because you want to see it done within the time that you're serving on the board. So let's make sure that it's done properly. That's, that's just the way it should be done. We don't, just like in Congress, we don't pass the bill and then figure out what's in it afterwards. If you're going to put it in there, we need to know what it's going to do and what it's going to say. And along with that, if we could, when we do have any changes to any policy, if, just ask this, can we add in, you know, because we do the track changes, can we add in what other policies that may affect, like if we are changing a policy, if it changes a different policy or it affects a different policy? That would help us reference, I think, you know, because it's great having the red and the track changes of, of how the language is changing, but sometimes it has that ripple effect, and it would help, I think, if we could have a direct correlation of what that ripple effect is. Thanks, sir.
And John, we don't have a process, so just because you don't want to have something done, doesn't make a good stand by it to pass.
I didn't say that. I, I.
We don't have a process yet, so that's why I'm saying, as Mr. Ziegler said, any board member can put it on the agenda, so I'm making a suggestion to move it forward. So, you know, don't just change things around to suit your agenda either.
Well, then, well, let's just get back to, are we okay with simultaneously working on procedures which will come after policy, so that we don't delay that even longer?
Yeah, I think we have a, we have a timeline that it's already there. We have a timeline that the superintendent's put out. I, I guess I'm missing the...
The timeline may be, for the strategic plan, may be substantially longer than need be for a current, important topic, and that's our concern. Mrs. Belford.
Okay. So the discussion that we've had today is inevitably going to be heard by our principals, our teachers, our students, our coaches, our everyone. And there are going to be assumptions made about our expectations going forward, regardless of the fact that we haven't officially voted on a policy. So I'm fine with the policy coming to us on the May 10 board meeting, and I do believe that we need to take the necessary time to develop the administrative procedures, so we're not doing it in haste. However, I also think that we have 9,000 employees and 73,000 students that are working under our expectations on a daily basis, and I think it would be very helpful if, at the very least, on that May 10 meeting, when the policy comes forward to us, that we could have an explanation of the administrative procedures of some of the hot-button issues. I'm not saying have everything absolutely laid out, but what is our expectation for locker rooms? What is our expectation for restrooms? What is our expectation for overnight field trips? What is our expectation for, you know, if there's a clash between religious rights and, and other rights that are categorized in our nondiscrimination policy? Those things that we are hearing a lot about that are creating a lot of angst, I think it would be really helpful to have some recommendation from staff on how those are being handled, so that people can feel a little bit more comfortable. Because inevitably, we're going to walk away from here today, and people are going to think that we're bringing the world to an end, regardless of which side of, of the issue you find yourself on. And I think what we have accomplished in our discussion, the, the thing that we have agreed on is that we were all here to do what's best for our kids. And so I think we need to stay focused on that and, and reassure that as we move forward, that's still going to be our priority in the decisions that we make on a day-to-day basis. But I fear if we don't give some comment on that, some direction on those things that have people so concerned, that it's, it's just going to turn into a mess.
There is another concern.
Mrs. Neese.
The final comment, and the reason I'm pushing for May is, and I'm not conceding to the strategic plan, is that, number one, the board hasn't even met on the strategic plan. We haven't adopted the strategic plan, and we haven't agreed to the strategic plan timeline, which is why I'd like to wrap up on this one issue, so the board can agree on a strategic plan and the timeline. So I'm not going to agree on anything in regards to where this fits on the strategic plan until, as Mrs. Henderson has said in past board meetings, we need to meet on that and agree with that. And so as you always do so well, Mrs. Belford, you have put this all very well, you speak very well on what the issues are, what's most important, which is why I want to move forward on May 10, focused on what's most important, and that is the students. And that's all students, all employees. So thank you for putting what you always do in putting us, is putting everything that needs to be said short, sweetened, to the point.
Mrs. Henderson.
And I think maybe we talked about it at one, I talked about it with somebody, maybe it was you. There is another issue that hasn't been brought out as much as these three, but it's curriculum. And, and there is a push to put the curri, to change our curriculum in our schools, so I think that we need to address that as well, what that might look like, and whether or not that's a place, this place wants to go.
Go ahead, then, Mrs. Belford, then Dr. Blackburn.
I have heard some discussions... I have heard some discussion about that, and I don't know...certainly, this board has not discussed changing our curriculum. So I think it's important that the public know that this board has not discussed changing our curriculum. Furthermore, the state of Florida actually dictates what we teach in our health education courses. So we don't even have the freedom, should we choose, to change our curriculum, to change that curriculum, to incorporate those things without approval from the state. But there is no...there's been no discussion from us on that. I think furthermore, we need to take a look at, you know, we were looking at competing or contradicting policies. We have a lot of policies in place that kind of guide our procedures on some of these things, like our curriculum, for example. We have a policy that actually says that our teachers are not even allowed to discuss issues of sex, sexual orientation, drug use, any of that. They have got to refer the students to the guidance counselor. We have policies that say that, you know, teachers have to behave in a manner that's not distracting in the classroom. So I think when we get into the discussion of the procedural stuff, I think more of that will come out. But that's...I'm glad you brought that up, so that we can include that, because I too heard some scuttle.
Right, and I just want to make sure that we get some sort of a discussion, so that we're all...we all understand, and everybody in the community understands.
Dr. Blackburn, would you like to close this out?
I'll just briefly say, I mean, I'll repeat what I said at the beginning. I really value what brought us here today and how we created this conversation. It was a true collaborative effort from the staff leaders, the board leaders, and the superintendent. And the discourse was extremely civil, and I don't think anyone lost sight of all kids, you know, mattering...or all kids mattering? I'm not going to like that word when I see it again. But those are my close-out thoughts, Mr. Ziegler. Looking forward to bringing it back.
Very good, then that'll be the end of this journey workshop. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you again, everybody.